Measure U enables the city to maintain and enhance public safety and certain quality of life and youth services. Today, we are here to examine another potential mitigation. The balance between the use of taxpayer dollars to provide service and the person directly receiving the service to pay for that service. The cost of some things such as public safety should rightfully be paid by all taxpayers. Oops, sorry, my screen jumped here. Other services such as swimming lessons may have a dual benefit. On the one hand, the person learning to swim and their family are benefiting from an education and a service and should probably pay for part of that service. On the other hand, the general public benefits from having people in our community knowing how to swim and maintain water safety. Other services the city provides may have very little benefit to the taxpayers and the user should be paying for most if not all of that service. The question today is, how much should we as taxpayers pay for the service the city is providing? Should we be using our taxpayer money only on those things we all benefit from? Or also on those things only the person using the service benefits from? Keep in mind that each tax dollar we spend on a service is a tax dollar we don't have to spend on a general benefit, such as public safety. That is the discussion we would like to hear today. It's been several years since the community has had this discussion and it's very likely that the balance isn't where we as a community and the city council would like that balance to be. We conducted an analysis to help us with this discussion and I'm happy now to turn the discussion over to Finance Director Mary Harvey to discuss the analysis and introduce our professional team.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. Thank you, council members and public and staff for being here today. And we will look forward to hearing comments and getting your input on this important topic. Last year during the city council's goal-setting exercise and during the 2022 budget cycle, city council had asked staff to see how the city might increase revenues to determine how or who should be paying for the services cities provides. Conducting a comprehensive cost of services study commonly referred to as a user fee study is the first step in determining which services are paid by taxpayers and which are paid by those directly receiving this service. The last time a user fee study was conducted was in 2005. Since then, except for the past, this past July, fees have been updated annually by CPI. Of course, in the meantime, there have been a number of new requirements placed on us in how we provide services that have added time and costs. And many of our expenditures such as healthcare costs have increased more than annual CPI increases. Result of this is that there are many services the city provides that are now disproportionately funded by tax dollars where the intent of the city council had been to have tax dollars used for the general benefit of the community and fee revenues charged to those who choose to have a specific service. The city continually works hard to keep costs low. However, there are still costs for providing all services the city provides. And the question then is, what is the proportion of who pays for these costs? The taxpayer or the person benefiting from the service? Just over a year ago, the city selected revenue and cost specialists to conduct a comprehensive user fee study. And so that's what we're here today to do is to talk about that. I'm going to share my screen and just go over real quick the agenda for this afternoon. There goes, all right. So what we're going to do first is we'll have an overview of the cost of services study to understand how it was put together and what all went into that, how to read that, what it, what it all says. And then second, we're going to talk about a user fee cost recovery policy. And this is really important for the city to look at, how are we going to do this? What is the roadmap we want to have to be able to set these fees now and to consider them in the future? And so that's, that's one goal I would like to see us hear input on that. We have a draft policy that we've, we presented to council earlier and we'll be going through that. Then we're going to take a 10-minute break because we know this is a lot of information. We need to kind of take a break and refresh and come back. And then after that break, we'll go ahead and do, look at the proposed user fees. And that's where we'll get more into the detail of those fees and we'll receive comments after those as well. The directors will also can, can provide input as, as needed. And then after that, the next steps after we're all finished with today's session will be that we're having a second workshop, which will be on March 11th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And that will be via Zoom as well. So with that, I would like to now turn this over to, and to introduce Eric Johnson, President of Revenue and Cost Specialists, and Chu Tai, who is the Vice President. And they will go ahead and, sorry, trying to unshare here. And they will present the next thing. Hey, did I unshare? I think I unshared.
Did. Can everyone see the, the first slide here? All right. Thank you, Mary. As you guys can imagine, we've been spending a lot of time, all of us, trying to work out the, the technical details to make all this kind of come together. So, so far, so good. So people have to yell at me if I, if that changes. So, good afternoon, Mayor Patino and members of the council. I am Eric Johnson. Chu Tai is also on the line here. It's good to be back in front of you today after the initial council meeting. Going to go through the presentation we went through last time at the last council meeting to, for those people who were not there then, so they kind of get a background of what we did and how we did it. So before we do that, just want to give you a little background on, on Revenue Cost Specialists, that we started in 1980 with a former city manager and former finance director. And they, they really pioneered the concept of matching fee revenue with the cost of the service. And in the wake of Proposition 13 and Proposition 4, which I'll talk about in a moment. Over those last 40 years, we've studied over 250 agencies in five different states. I myself have been doing this for 31 years now in over 100 different agencies. Chu Tai has been doing, has 23 years of governmental experience as a budget manager and finance director and, and now also with Revenue and Cost Specialists. So this is, this is what we do. So what have we done? We have recast the city budget with a business orientation. We did this because the voters told us to. In 1978, they passed Proposition 13, which limited property taxes, as we all know. Then a year later, they passed Proposition 4, which said that fees that do not exceed the costs reasonably borne of providing the service are not considered taxes. They wanted government to act more like a business and know its costs. But while governmental accounting does a great job of tracking revenues and expenses at the fund, department, and division level, it was never really designed to track revenues and costs at a service level. So we had to create that information. Working with staff over the last year, we identified what a cost provides the full business cost of services to your customers. So there is no city council service or city manager service. These costs amongst others are part of the overhead support cost. It's just like when you go to the store and you buy a can of corn. You know that the cost of that can includes the farmer and the canners and the distributors and the truck drivers and the checkers at the grocery store. You know that. Well, we have done that same thing here with the city services. We have identified the full business cost of providing services to your customers. As a business, you won't stay in business very long if you don't know this information. Additionally, you also not stay in business very long if you're not able to match up revenues with those costs. So we have done that, we have done this also. For every fee service, we have identified the revenue and matched that up with the cost of providing that service. So how did we do it? Well, as I mentioned, we had to create this information. There's no database that exists that identifies how much time people spend on the various services. So we sat down with department staff and over many months had, in many meetings, developed what are the services being provided? How much time does it take to provide those services? Who's providing them? And went over it and over it and over it until we all felt comfortable that this information was good information. We reviewed the budget and we calculated the overhead rates and we developed a fully allocated hourly rate for every position. So that includes salaries and benefits and operating expenses and overheads, city overheads and department overheads and sometimes division overheads. And a little later this afternoon, we'll get in a little more detail so you can see a fully burned hourly rate and, and how those, those numbers come together. So we matched up that time with those costs and now we knew what the cost of the service was. We categorized between community-supported services, those things that as Jason mentioned, that taxes, taxes pay for, and those things that are personal choice services. We'll get into that a little bit more also. We reviewed for those personal choice services. We then reviewed with the departments saying, here's the cost. And in most cases, 100% cost recovery, what would that fee be to recover those costs? And, and review that with the departments to make sure that the, the fee would make sense if it's indeed approved by the city, approved by the city council. Now, there's a difference between different types of services. Community-supported services, those things, what we also call tax services. People, when people say, you know, what are my taxes paid for? This is what your taxes pay for. It typically benefits the community as a whole. Again, 100% supported by tax dollars and for things such as police and fire and maintenance services. Then there's also personal choice services, also called fee services. The customer is identifiable, the service is measurable. Most importantly, it benefits an individual or group and not the community at large. You can still subsidize it based on social, safety, welfare reasons or whatever reasons the council decides. Examples of these are development services, which are typically not subsidized, and recreation services, which typically are. Another way to look at this, I'm kind of a picture guy. So another way to look at what I just said is the upper left-hand circle, taxes and grants, are there to support community-supported services. The upper right-hand circle fees are there to support personal choice services. But to the extent that the fees don't cover the cost providing the service, that money has to come from somewhere. And it can only come from taxes and grants. There's no hidden pot of money that, that local government can, can call on to make up the difference. It's got to come out of taxes. That means you have this leakage of tax dollars to support these personal choice services that can no longer be spent on community-supported services because the costs are occurring. The question now is, who's going to pay for these services? The person receiving the service or the taxpayer? Those are your only choices. And if the taxpayer is going to pay for it, then there's less money for community-supported services that only taxes can pay for, such as police, fire, parks, streets, recreation. If the person or group benefiting from the service pays for that service, then there is more money available for these community-supported services. You can't spend a dollar more than once, of course. Now, there's this big number there, $10.8 million, $10.9 million, huge number. But we don't think that it's realistic to expect anywhere near that kind of recovery through fees. We do identify what we think, based on our experience, that the city can recover almost $3.4 million annually if all of the recommendations in this report are acted upon. So if we look at these kind of, in these categories that we have, community development services, planning, building, engineering services, pretty much 100% cost recovery, $1.5 million subsidy, $1.5 million new revenue. Now, it should be noted that building fees are actually recovering their cost. We're not recommending any changes to the building fees through this study because they're recovering their cost and not over-recovering and not under-recovering. So the changes that we're recommending have to do with planning fees and engineering fees. Public safety, there's a big subsidy and a, only about a 50% recovery. And the big reason for that is there are certain inspections, code enforcement inspections or false alarm responses, which are not really designed to generate revenue. It's more designed to generate compliance. And so these are not necessarily things that are going to generate revenue for the city, but hopefully will, will lower and, and lower the, the future costs and improve the, the public safety in the community. Leisure and cultural services, recreation services, we're not recommending any changes to the recreation fees. I want to make that clear. Recreation is a different animal. And hopefully we'll have a different discussion about that, about what, how much does this, does the city want to subsidize its recreation services? It's going to subsidize it. It will not exist otherwise. If you charge full cost, nobody would pay for it. So that is a totally separate discussion. And again, I hope the council will have a, set aside some time in the future to have that discussion about recreation services, recreation fees. And so that's why we're not suggesting that there's any new revenue from that area. Maintenance and air price services, that's premium, that's in the utility area mostly. And so there are, we, that's, that's being paid for by the rate payer today. So to the extent that the fee doesn't cover the cost of the service, the rate payer is making up that difference. But we, we feel that people that receiving the individual benefit should pay for it instead of every water user in the city. For the administration side, it's mostly cost recovery, but there, with the delinquent water turnoffs, there's recent state law that limits the, the amount that the city can charge for delinquent water turnoffs. And so that's why there is a subsidy level there. So that's the, that's kind of the big picture as to why we're going from $10.9 million in subsidy to about $3.4 million in possible new revenue. But at the end of the day, the city council makes the final decision on all of these tax subsidies and on how much certain services are subsidized and how much certain services are not. The project goal, our goal was to identify the full cost for all the various different services and we've done that. We've made fee recommendations for every service, even if in the recreation area, those, those recommendations are to study the subsidy levels. It's now to the city council to decide which services should be charged the full cost and which services should be subsidized with tax dollars. Because this is really about tax subsidy policy. Which services are important enough to the broader community to be supportive of tax dollars? And which services are really benefiting individuals and should be borne by them? The services are being provided, the costs are occurring, who's going to pay for it? Now, to help structure these decisions, we've proposed a user fee cost recovery policy. The goals of the policy would be to develop this policy to define the subsidy levels for broad categories of fees, define for the public why certain fee categories are subsidized while others are not, to provide guidance to staff on new user fees in the future. And of course, this is a draft that we're looking for feedback from the council and the community going forward. There'll be many criteria that will be used to determine the eventual cost recovery policy, including is it community-wide versus private benefit? Service recipient versus community benefit? In other words, who benefits from the service? Consistency with city goals and policies? What do we feel is important to us as a city? The elasticity of demand for services and accessibility of services from the private sector? I'm sorry, availability of services from the private sector, basically recreation services. These fees are determined by the market. And so people can choose not to take a class if they feel the cost is too high. So that has to go into the decisions, the same thing with facility rentals and, and things of that nature. And of course, at the end of the day, feasibility of collection recovery. It, it doesn't make sense to charge a fee that is impractical to actually charge. And so this is an example here of what a policy may look like. There, there's kind of three groups here. We have a low group, which is 0% to 30% cost recovery, so mostly subsidized. It benefits the public at large. A medium group, which is 30% to 70% subsidized, so kind of partially subsidized. And then a high group, which is 70% to 100%, which is, you know, it again benefits a, a individual or individual group. Very low subsidy, if any subsidy at all. This is just an example of what one may look like. There's, there's no magic to what categories we come up with. There's no, you know, we have low, medium, high. I've seen other cities that have five categories, others that have two. And so it's just, as we work through this, it'll, you know, I think if, certain one, certain groups of services will fall into some categories and it'll make sense as we work through this a little more. It's hard to think about it in a vacuum, but when we start talking about it with distinct services, you'll get a better feel for what you've, you think certain services belong.
Excuse me, Eric?
Yes.
At a water field, what you just said, are you going to give us examples of businesses in regards to each cost recovery group, the low, medium, and high?
As far as different services?
Yes.
Yeah, as we go through here, you know, just as an example, the, the low will probably, probably be things like the recreation services that will be highly subsidized. The medium may be some public safety services like false alarms that you may want to partially subsidize or alarm permits or things of that nature, or appeals, appeals to, to the city council. High will be most everything else frankly, at least from my perspective as, as, as an outsider, that most of the services we've recommended here are at 100% cost recovery. I know the, the staff has some things that they're going to want to weigh in on that they feel that there may be some subsidies on certain things. And of course, you and the community are going to want to weigh in on these certain things.
Okay, so most of that would be development then?
Yes.
In the, okay. All right. Thank you. Sorry for interfering.
No, I was, I was actually at a good spot. We're going to stop here for questions, both from the, the council and from the community before we take a, a quick break. So are there any questions about what we've talked about so far before we get into more detail at the next part of the meeting?
I'm not seeing any guests raising their hands at the moment.
Okay.
Any panelists? Oh, looks like, wait a minute, we have something. We have a caller. Let's see. Your, can you turn on your mic, caller? Hello?
There's a question posted. I'm not sure if it's the same, but the question was, will this affect youth sports within our community?
Currently, we're not recommending any changes to the fees. There, there are, there is a recommendation that the ballfield rental fees bump up a little bit on an hourly basis. But that's more for private rentals and not for the youth groups. Outside of that, it's, it's, what we, what I would really like the council to think about is, and we'll talk about this later, is what, what level of subsidy do you want for your recreation programs? And we can certainly get into more detail to, to show what the cost recovery is currently, what is a realistic cost recovery, but set some goals for the staff that for these programs, we want 50% recovery of the direct cost. So they know when they're setting the fees going forward, that they have a good idea of what that council policy is and what the community wants to support. And versus saying that this, you know, youth softball or this adult softball team should pay this amount. Or this youth recreation class should pay this amount. We're talking about from a policy standpoint and then letting staff set fees within those policy goals. But again, that's, that's at the discretion of the council.
Eric, we've received a chat to us as panelists. Will this affect youth sports within our community?
Yeah, that, and that's just the one I was referring to.
Oh, okay. All right. Doing a few things here at one time. And we've asked the caller to unmute and we're not able to reach him. So unless the council has any other questions or department directors, we can move on.
So we had scheduled the break now. Do we want to take the break or do we want to move forward?
We just, we may just want to move forward if everyone's fine with this. Went a little faster than I expected, so. Which.
How about we go for another 30 minutes since we had scheduled till 5:30 or so? And see where we stand with questions from the community.
Let's just keep on moving forward.
Yeah.
That's good.
All right. Proposed user fees. And so I'm going to be switching back and forth to different programs here to kind of walk through an example of one of the services and walk through one potential way of discussing this today. And so here's that, that subsidy versus revenues, where we break out the different categories that we were looking at a few moments ago. But so I'm going to switch to this. And so what we have on the screen here, hopefully is on the screen for everybody, is a spreadsheet that shows all of the services that are in the report, 245 services. And each row is a different service. And so you'll see for each row, what's the reference number, which is an important thing to remember as you're going through the report, description of the service title, what the current fee is, what the suggested fee is, and then that unit revenue, which should match up with what the fee is, and that unit cost, which should match up to what the suggested fee is. And then we've color-coded it. So those that are unit profit subsidy in column I here in red are those that have big subsidies, those that are, you know, over $250 per unit subsidies. We have some, as you see in the yellow, which have smaller subsidies. And there's even some down in green, which have a little bit of profit. So those are fees that were recommended that the city decrease. So that's what the color coding means here. And then next to that is the number of units per year. So we're saying there's eight of these a year. We're suggesting that there be 100% cost recovery on this service. And the possible new revenue on an annual basis, which is being covered up here, is $30,300 if the recommendation for 100% cost recovery is implemented. And so the color code in there is green is a lot of new revenue. Yellow is a little bit of new revenue or zero new revenue. And then, and then red would be negative new revenue because those are instances where the fee is over recovering the cost and we need to lower the fee. So there's a number of those in here also. So that's the, the layout as far as how this spreadsheet and hopefully this kind of discussion document is, is laid out. Let me just kind of quickly walk you through how we got to $577 in unit cost. And so this is where I'm going to switch again to, or yeah, there you are. The report. And so this is the, the 600-page report that's on the city's webpage. It has all the text in the beginning. This is in Appendix B of the report. I'm actually on page, you see at the bottom, page 95. But here's this reference number, S001. And so every one of these services on that spreadsheet will have these two matching pages. The first page will be the description of the service, what's the current fee, a revenue and cost comparison, and here's the, that recommended fee down at the bottom. But what we want to key in now is on that second page where we have the cost details. So here's the $5,077. There's eight of these a year and a total cost of over $40,000 to provide this service. Where does that come from? Comes from all these positions and this came from all of our meetings that we had with, with the departments. All of these positions spend time on this service. So for instance, we have the director that spends an hour, office assistant, two hours and 15 minutes, and so on and so on, including someone from the fire department and police and engineering and the water department spend time on this service as it gets routed to them and they have their feedback on this particular application. The bulk of the time is on us, project planner here, we have 15 hours. So where does that come from? And so for planning, because there's so many different moving pieces that we kind of break out the steps because there's so many steps in a planning application. So here is this conditional use permit to the zoning administrator without a site development. And we've broken out the steps that are involved, application submittal, initial review, development review meeting and doing the letter, the categorical exemption, preparing the staff report, public hearing noticing, the actual hearing for the zoning administrator. And then there's going to be other services where there's hearings and preparation for planning commission meetings and hearings and preparations for city council meetings. This particular service doesn't have that. And then the project wrap-up and then the condition compliance that comes a little bit further down the road. So all those add up to this 15 hours. So we went through this process with every one of the planning services to make sure that we're capturing the right amount of time, not too much time, but also making sure we're capturing all that time and of all the different positions involved in this service. And this is, like I said, this is the part of the process that we really spent many hours with staff and I want to thank them very much for, for sticking with. sticking with it and, and, and going through this, because we started this pre-pandemic and then we had to pick this up during the pandemic, so it was, um, it was a lot of fun. And so that's how we got that fifteen hours. And which then shows up here. Now fifteen hours of our project planner turns into two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. Where does that come from? Well, that's that fully allocated hourly rate that I was talking about earlier. So fifteen hours, so if I do my quick math, two point six three five divided by fifteen, that's a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. Where does that come from? Well, we have this detail for every position in the city. This fully allocated hourly rate for our project planner. Now, this particular position is a combination of our assistant, associate and senior planners, because they're kind of interchangeable and that they all spend time on these very similar projects. And so we, here we have four point one of these. Or six thousand seven hundred and forty hours. Because we're looking at available work hours, so we back out holiday vacation, sick leave and so on, so we end up with about sixteen hundred and forty-four hours per year. If we take their actual salary and divided by this six thousand seven hundred and forty hours, we come up with forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. So we're saying that's the cost just for salary only. We then add in the fringe benefits, another thirty-four dollars per hour. We add in the maintenance and operations costs within the planning department, so things like IT and fleet and paper and some supplies, things of that nature. As another fourteen dollars. But then down here, we add an overhead cost. So this is things like city overhead, so things like city council, city manager, finance, HR, facility maintenance are all included in city overhead cost. But there's also departmental overhead costs, there's, there's time of the director and the clerical staff to do the administrative duty, administrative and support duties within planning department. And so those costs are spread out here also, so that adds another seventy-eight dollars. So that's how we got to the hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour for this, for this, um, project planner. So it's just like, you know, when you pay for a plumber, you know, when you pay for that plumber and he charges you a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, you're going, Jesus, I should have become a plumber. Well, he's got all his overhead costs and, and associated costs also, so that's what, it's that same kind of thing we're doing here. So we do that for every position. We identify that the city does about eight of these a year. And so we multiply all that unit cost times eight, that gives us our, our total or annual cost. But this important over here is this five thousand seventy-seven dollars, so that's what we're saying, this is what it costs. And like I said, we've done this for every service in this report. And to get that, that let, that time detail to make sure we all feel comfortable that this is, this is what it costs. Are there, before we start getting into, start talking about services, are there any questions about any of that?
Eric, I, this is Etta Waterfield.
Yes.
Looking at the cost, you know, it's, it's quite amazing, but how do you compare it to their job description when they go in and get hired and they have a job description list and their salaries cover in the job description, a lot of these things they have to do? Help me, help me understand that.
Yeah, this is, it's definitely in their job description, that's, that's why they were hired was, as, as a planner, uh, you know, huge part of your job is to process development applications. And so there's no doubt that that's, that's what they're there to do. The question becomes, who's going to pay for it? Is it, is it something that benefits the individual applicant, that in this case, the, the, the business that, uh, has a small conditional use permit? Or is it something that benefits the community as a whole? Because, yeah, they're, they're hired to, to, to do their job and they're doing their job. Then it's just a question of who's going to pay for that service? And is there an opportunity for the applicant to pay for that service? Because when we're talking about, you know, we, because there's the same thing with a police, police officer doing patrol. Uh, we know what it costs and that's in his job, his or her job description, but then it's a question there. We know that the taxpayer is paying for that service, both because that's what people expect from their tax dollars and also there's no realistic way to charge someone if they call the police department. Um, and so it's, it's really focusing on the costs are occurring, the services are being provided, and yes, that's what they're there for, but who's going to pay for it?
Well, obviously the taxpayers pay for it because of, through our taxes in regards to that. But I, I was just looking at the cost of what we charge now to the actual cost that, uh, we just discovered, or you, that you just discovered the difference of the thirty-seven eighty-one. And so how, how would you present that to a, a develop, a development group? I mean, one of the reasons that they, we do such a great job in developing and here in the city of Santa Maria, and I'm just picking your brain right now with everybody listening. Would it be smart to go that high at one time?
Well, you could certainly have a discussion about whether or not you want to phase in certain fees and have large increases. But, you know, the dirty little secret is that developers don't care that much about fees. Big fees like capital fees, yeah, they certainly care about those, but these are relatively small fees in the bigger picture. And it doesn't move the needle. What moves the needle from a developer standpoint is of course the price of property and all of that, but how quickly you can get things through. I've been in communities where they charge double and triple for an expedited service and they got people lining up to pay for it. Because it's not those fees that, that determine whether or not you're going to build there and how much money they're going to make. It's that how quickly can they get it through the process, because for them, time is money.
Time is money, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Eric. Um, we have a few questions off to the side in our chat. From, uh, Maria Diaz, uh, she asks if Measure U covers, uh, for recreation and youth programs. Why are these being affected and, um, asking if several people understand that they've lost their jobs and others are just making it week to week? And know that they, that you want them to pay more?
Uh, well, at the end of the day, you know, our job is to come in and tell the council, provide information. This is how much you're spending. You are, you're subsidizing a one conditional use permit to the tune of almost four thousand dollars. And that means that's money that can't be spent on various other things that really benefit the community. And so, yes, there's absolutely people that are hurting and the council, i- in, you can certainly use this discretion if they want to, subsidize certain groups or, or, um, you know, in the recreation area, provide scholarships if they decide they want to raise some recreation fees, which I haven't heard any, uh, mention of. But, yeah, at the end of the day, it, it, the council members are the representatives of the community. And of course, live in the community and will respond to the community and, um, but knowing that we only have so much tax dollars, that it's, it's, it's a, it's a finite, um, circle. And so we need to figure out what's the best way to use those tax dollars and, and here's an option to be able to have some additional tax dollars so that there aren't, there isn't as much of a need for tax measures going forward.
I see that, uh, Mary Harvey has her hand up real quick, um, Mary, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, I actually was just going to, Eric already answered it very well, um, really with, with Measure U being, um, a tax dollars and that we, um, do use Measure U for recreations, um, in park services, youth services as well as for public safety and quality of life. So it essentially is, it's a matter of will we be able to provide other services? Um, if we, if other, um, if we had more tax revenue to use for our core services. So, um, it's, it's really looking at not so much, um, the, the, we're looking at the cost, the cost is the cost. We do, we always try to minimize our costs to be as efficient as we can. But when it, the, at the end of the day, that the cost is the cost, now we have to say, how are we going to pay for that? And so, um, once, and that's why, uh, policy is really important as well, is because we're have, we want to be able to say this is where we're, how, why we're doing this, this is, we're, we're doing it a very thoughtful way, thinking which users are, are benefiting from this, which services are things that we want our, um, our, our, uh, residents to be able to, um, to utilize and rec, youth services has been a big one. And it certainly is an area that, um, I don't know of any city that does not subsidize their youth services and recreation parks, because like Eric said, if, if we did that full cost, people would not be able to. They would go somewhere else, and that's not the, the intent of this study, it's not the intent of, um, of fees going forward. The real intent is to come up with what's the right subsidy levels? And which ones should not be subsidized at all if that's the case? And again, it's up to council to really kind of weigh in and decide on what that's going to be. So we're just trying to provide all the information.
You see, now that Chu has his hand up, one of our consultants on this project, Chu, did you have something more to add?
Yeah, absolutely, I want to, um, expand a lot.
Um, you're muted, I think.
No, I, I can hear Chu.
I want to expand.
I can't hear him.
What Eric and Mary have said is, um, I want to look at the accountability.
Chu, do you have your language selected?
We can hear him.
Yeah, I can hear him.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear us.
I didn't select a language, like you said. So I want to talk about the accountability of everything, like before Prop thirteen, everything was through taxes. And when Prop thirteen, it li- limited the amount of taxes we had, there are other revenue streams that the city must use, including user fees and grants. So government, local government is more complex now, you can't think local government is just taxes. It's, it's other revenue sources. And what we have to do is we have to be accountable for each pool of revenues. The rep, like, uh, Mary said, um, Santa Maria approved, um, Measure U. And you have to be accountable with the Measure U funds, it has to be applied to where the, the city promised to use it. Now, if you're subsidizing, what I see on the screen is a subsidy of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. You're taking Measure U funds or other tax funds to pay for that. And I just don't think that's a good policy. It should be that the users who can, and you can also talk about affordability of it all. This is a, a development permit and it would only be executed if the applicant has the resources to do the development and pay for these fees, as well as pay for the construction, the land purchase and all that. So this is one area where they should all stay that way and be independent, while the other one is the tax. And like Mary said, some people are having problems, um, uh, you know. Look for, you know, I'm out of work right now and the, the ability to give council the discretion to do what they have with the tax funds uh, to apply it toward, towards a youth and recreation programs or public safety, I think that's important too. So, so it's more complex, you have to look at these, these areas and you have to separate them out and, and hold each one accountable for that.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, it looks like we have a, another chat question, more kind of a statement than a, a chat, so if you want to pipe in, um, you can, and then I see I have, um, two hands raised as attendees and I'll, I'll reach over to that one over in a moment. So James Frederick has indicated, uh, in regard to youth recreation. As an example, when you say you aren't recommending a fee increase, but you burdened overseeing department to meet a certain level of cost recovery. Does that not burden them to pass through cost increases to agencies or organizations that use the city services in other ways?
Um, not, not from a, a kind of an accounting perspective, it's, it's, it's something we're really more doing from a costing perspective while doing this study. Uh, because in recreation, we actually break out the, the cost and break out the overhead cost and look at just the direct cost. So back in appendix C of, of the report, and I'm going to pull that up, I think. And so back in appendix C, we break out what are the direct costs of the various different programs? Both program cost and part-time and, um, supply cost, as well as the full-time people that actually work on the program. We broke out the facility cost. And then there's the indirect cost, which is departmental overhead and city overhead, so that is the total cost. But it's this direct recovery column that I'm going to ask the council to focus on in the future. And because that's, that's the number that really had, is more meaningful to staff. Because if you come in and say, you know, we're recovering thirteen percent of the cost of the total cost of the department, including everything. We want you to recover twenty percent. Okay, but now they got to go and recalculate the overheads and they got to recalculate the facility spreads and all of that. Versus just saying, here's the direct cost. Set a goal based on the direct cost and it'll be a higher percentage, because of course we're spreading that over a lower base. And so maybe the goal is you're recovering twenty-three percent now for the department, maybe the goal is we want to recover twenty-five percent. But just of the direct cost, because the department knows what their direct costs are, they know how much they're spending on, on part-time staff and how much they're spending on supplies and all the various different programs they run. And then they can come back to the council and say, okay, you set a goal for this and here's how we've met that goal, or here's how we haven't met that goal and here's why. Uh, or maybe that, uh, the council may decide they want to break it, things into adult versus youth. Or versus teen versus seniors versus aquatics. Um, there's all kinds of ways that goals can be set, but really focusing on that direct cost recovery. So even though we, we've kind of fully burdened the, the services as part of our process, because we did that for all the services. We're really focusing on what is just that direct cost recovery for recreation.
Okay, thank you, um, Eric, um, did you want, did you have more to your presentation at this point, do you want to move forward or do you want to take a couple more questions from the public?
I'm, I'm fine for questions, I, I figure we'd get the, kind of these kind of questions answered and then maybe take a break then and then come back to get into the, the council discussion with the individual services.
Okay, I'm going to try to see if we can jump in with that caller from earlier and I see he has his hand up. I'm going to ask him to unmute his microphone. I'm not able to get a response yet from that individual. So I do have another individual who has posted his name as an attendee, his name is Tim Waters. Um, and has his hand raised, I'll, um, allow him to speak at this time by unmuting him, asking him to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Okay, um, I just want to share some thoughts, I don't know that I have a specific question, and I'm looking at this kind of as a workshop style or a study style session. So I, I want to weigh in a couple, on a couple of different things and just use this conditional use permit, uh, component as, as an example. First, let me say that San, City of San Luis Obispo, which in my world, I, I'm, I'm the, uh, Government Affairs Director for the Central Coast Home Builders Association. I'm also a principal and partner at RRM Design Group in San Luis Obispo. You know, we've done all sorts of work in Santa Maria, San Luis, you know, Santa Barbara County, North, uh, San Luis. So I, I just want to say that, you know, in my world, as a civil engineer, m- most of us considers the City of San Luis Obispo or the, or City of Santa Barbara as being like the, like the the highest fee-based groups that we deal with and, and that we shepherd applicant, applicants through that process. And I just want to give you context a little bit, because City of San Luis, I'm on one of their, um, task forces or, or groups that talks about development fees pretty regularly. And they, in their conditional use permit fee, and they do full cost recovery at City of Slow is seventeen grand and that is for a major development conditional use permit, seventeen grand, not forty, not even close to forty. So you're, you're, you're over double what the City of San Luis Obispo is. That's number one. Number two is, when you look at the hourly wa- rates for planners and staff or particularly principal planners. You know, you've got the director in there at, you know, three hundred and fifty dollar or three ninety an hour, you've got the principal planners in there at, you know, three hundred, three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. I mean, those types of rates are extremely high. I mean, they're, those, those rates are much higher even than, than RR I mean, those rates are much higher even than RRM bills out. And I'm not saying that they shouldn't be higher. I'm just saying, when you look at the fee or when you look at the hourly rate as a three multiplier, that's kind of the standard industry rate. So I did a quick calc about a person that maybe makes 80 grand a year, like a staff planner. That at three times, if you use 2080 as the, you know, the work year, which is the hours per year, that comes out to three multiplier at $115 an hour. You guys are using $175 an hour. You're double dipping in the benefit area over and over again to get to that $175 rate. So, you know, to me, it just feels like you're overreaching on these fees over and over again, as far as when you calculate the rates and things like that. And I wanted to put that in context with the City of San Luis Obispo as another cost recovery area. So that's number one with regard to those rates and things like that. And then I wanted to add that there was a statement made about developers don't care about fees. Well, I want to weigh in a little bit on that, because they do care about fees. Fees are a big deal, and they are upfront costs that developers and applicants pay as out-of-pocket fee and cost that they then have to justify back to their financial institution that's going to fund the project. It's not an easy task. And when the fees are exorbitant, that is a red flag for financial institutions in financing development or applications. And I will say flat out that applications are job creators. They create jobs in construction. They provide housing for residents. And nine times out of 10, when it gets down to the end product, that fee that you've charged is going to get passed right onto the taxpayer in the cost of the house. Because that recovery has to happen five years down the road, and the applicant, it has to do something to try and justify that back to the financial institution. So the idea that they don't care about fees is not the case, I can tell you. And the idea that the applicant is the only beneficiary of that application is just not true. It's a jobs creator. It's a place maker. And if you really want to stop development in Santa Maria altogether, I can say start charging 40 grand for a use permit, and you will see everybody run recover. So that's, I guess that's all I have to say. It's not really questions. I just wanted to get those thoughts out there, because it really feels like you're kind of overselling it. But that's my two cents worth, so thank you. I'll go back on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Yeah, thanks, Rhonda. So I think Mr. Walters had a good question or good points about the methodology, Eric. And could you talk more about that, like the hourly rate and the analysis you did to figure out how long it takes for this work to get done?
Right, and so we're actually having about a 2.5 multiplier, actually a 2.61 multiplier, because all of these are percentage of the salaries. They do not build on each other, but are percentages on top of an increasing base. So they're all percentages of the salary. So we actually have about a 2.6 multiplier. And then we're not starting with 2,080 hours, but we're looking at the hours that people are actually there working. So we back out holiday, we back out vacation, we back out about half of the sick leave to kind of average out the sick leave usage. And so that's how we come up with about 1,644 hours a year instead of 2,080. And so that, as the caller mentioned, two to three times multiplier is fairly common. And we have that here, certainly within the planning department. And also wanted to point out that the 40,000 is the annual cost of all eight applications. Each application costs about $5,000. And we're saying that there's eight of these a year, eight separate applications a year for a total of $40,000. So that's why the fee is a $5,000 fee and not a $40,000 fee. And as far as the price of housing, no, the market sets the price of housing. If the development community could set the price of housing, it would be a lot different than what it is. So it may affect the developer's bottom line as far as how much profit they're going to make. And at a certain degree, they may decide not to build at all if it doesn't pencil out. But these fees are just such a small percent of their overall costs. I stand by my statement.
Eric, there were a couple more comments in the chat. One from Lindsay Hatcher. "Everyone cares or should care about fees. If additional fees are assessed, the price of the house will ultimately be higher. This is counterproductive to housing affordability goals. Please consider unintended consequences from raising fees."
So yeah, so I think I just answered that piece.
Yeah. Did you read through these other chats and respond to those or no?
Not recently.
Okay. So another one from Mr. Frederickson is, okay, as a follow-up question, if the direct cost recovery that Recreation and Parks, as an example, gets passed through to youth recreation providers, which then requires that the organization to raise their fees, et cetera, does that effectively raise the fees associated with recreation?
If the city council decides that they want a higher level of cost recovery out of the recreation programs, then there's different ways that staff could then go about it. One of them is to raise fees. But another way is to raise accessibility. You know, the whole volume, volume, volume. And so are we maximizing the infrastructure we have, the facilities we have to be able to provide all the programs we can? These, you know, it's a really complicated question when it comes down to recreation staff setting fees and what will work with certain parts of the community versus other parts of the community. And that's why it's trying to get the council to set that goal and let the recreation professionals who know their programs and know their community set the goal that will work in their community. Because if they raise the fees and no one comes, you have less revenue. So it's a very fine balancing act that raising fees is typically not the answer out of a revenue hole if you're the recreation department.
Our council member, Cordero, has his hand up. Council member Cordero, can you speak at this time?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think the caller from San Luis, as Mr. Stillwell said, raises valid points, but I took his interpretation as a single permit would be like $40,000. And I'm taking the interpretation of what we're reading, what we're hearing here in this presentation is that a single permit could be as low as $5,000 or slightly over that. So I think that is serving to add some confusion to the general population. We're in fact, it sounds to me like the services that we're suggesting here might even be less, not more, than they are in some of the other communities. And I think that, I think that that, I don't know if I'm wrong, and I think his name was Garner, is that it, Mr. Garner? If he's still listening and would like to contact me by phone personally, I would be interested in hearing what he has to say. But I think that we're, some people might be a little bit confused. And I just want to point that out, that there is some room for clarification here regarding these fee costs.
And just as a quick aside for those on the phone, and Community Development Director Ing did mention there are several types of conditional use permits depending on level of review, and recommended fees have a corresponding range as well. So this is one example that we're talking about, but it really depends on the type of use. It would be, the type of permit would depend on the type of use involved.
So Jason, if I can just provide a little bit more detail quickly, you'll see some acronyms under the column, service. So CUP, as you can tell, stands for Conditional Use Permit. And we receive conditional use permit applications sometimes for a project that includes construction. That's, so you'll see that's with site development. Sometimes we will see conditional use permit applications without new construction. And so that's without site development. And that's usually a use request. Say it's an existing building, and they want to do, say, a nightclub. So that still requires review and analysis, even though it's existing structure. The ZA stands for Zoning Administrator. Zoning Administrator is a review by the Community Development Director. A PC stands for Planning Commission. So there are several types of conditional use permits, and some require a more intense level of review, and some also go before a different review body, whether it's the director or the planning commission or the city council. And the different types of conditional use permits would all warrant a different hours from the time that's spent by the staff.
Okay, thank you, Chen. Eric, you ready to proceed, or Mary?
Well, can I jump in real quick? I liked that column F, the suggested fee. The fees are the estimated cost for these services. That's time converted to dollars. And whether it's fully paid by the applicant or fully paid by taxes, that's the fees and that's the dollars. These processes are comprehensive. They impact land use, which will be in place 20, 30, 40, 50 years. And the cost of the total project is significant. Like Eric said, it's all dependent on the market. But whether, you know, Santa Maria or any other communities decides to subsidize the fee, these are the costs.
Okay, thank you, Chu.
On that point, Chu and Eric, and I, you maybe have told me this, but just, so as far as cost increases going forward, I mean, we know that our costs have increased faster than inflation. So once the council determines tax versus user fee policy, going forward, then would, I know in the past we've aligned our fee increases to CPI. Is there a different methodology that you've identified going forward?
It really comes down to how often you want to go through this process and kind of recheck your numbers.
Every 15 years.
Yeah, we generally recommend every five years or so, or unless you've had a lot of changes in the organization as far as how you provide services, and then having those CPI increases in between. So you guys had the rent model. It's just instead of 15 years, it needs to be like five years.
And my background, coming from a former finance director, I see this as $3 million lost every year for the last five, 10, you know, maybe it's only a million dollars 15 years ago. But that's a lot of lost opportunity. That could have been a lot more parks and recreation program, more public safety, more street improvements. So I've always encouraged you kind of keep it updated as much as possible. And, but CPI, I mean, I'm glad Santa Maria is doing this, because you understand the process now and all that's involved and all the hours involved. Policymakers know how much staff is involved in the work, and it's accounted for. So yeah, to keep this updated as close as possible, I think it's always helpful. But to do this every year, like Eric said, it'd be cumbersome and wouldn't be worth it.
Councilmember Cordero has another comment.
Yeah, this is a comment for Mr. Johnson and Eric. With regard to what you just said, and wanting to keep in line with things, keep the costs and the cost recovery in a somewhat of a coordinated balance. Does anyone that you know of use a component that they settle, where they automatically trigger a a review of a certain cost when it goes over a certain percentage? So if the cost, say we agree that the cost should never go over 25%, and once the cost gets to theoretically 26%, then that should be reviewed and presented to somebody who can help with the decision-making process. Is there anybody that does anything like that to create these safety valves so we don't get so far out of whack?
I haven't seen that, just because that it's that kind of live information doesn't exist unless you go through this process. So it's kind of hard to figure out when you reach that tipping point. What I have seen, though, is I had one city council that looked at some of the dollar amounts, and they go, well, why is it that expensive to do that? Why does it take that much time to do that? Well, we're just following the code. And the code says this has to go to the planning commission, the city council. And though that's ridiculous, we don't need to see that. And so they changed the code, so certain things that went to city council can now be just reviewed by planning commission, or that were reviewed by planning commission can just be reviewed by staff. And so, you know, and that, of course, is a long-term process, but making sure your code is as efficient as can be, while still providing that level of transparency, which is what this is all about. Because at the end of the day, you know, transparency is expensive. And there are certain processes that have to go through to make sure that what is being proposed is good for the community. So that's kind of what I see more as a release valve. Is there certain processes that you guys feel are getting out of control? Most likely, it has to do with the code, and are there changes that can be made to the code that still accomplish the same thing in a more efficient way?
Thank you very much.
Okay, I see that our council member, Carlos Escobedo, joined us and was able to make it online. Welcome, Eric, Mary.
I didn't know if this is where we wanted to take a break or if this is where we want to go forward and kind of talk about, because the next step is to kind of work through this list here and identify those services that the council has issues or questions about, and hopefully get some kind of consensus amongst the council that, yes, we're okay with 100% cost recovery, or here's the ones where we're not comfortable with what's being recommended. And maybe focus on those issues instead of having to look at each individual one. I didn't know if we wanted to take a break first.
Yes, let's take a break. Okay, with that, 10 minutes, five minutes? What would you recommend?
Hand is fine.
Yeah, till three, hello.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we'll take a quick break. Everyone, go ahead and mute their microphones. And if you'd like, you can turn off your cameras for now, and then we'll come back on in just a few minutes. Looks like we're all starting to come back on board. All right, Ms. Mary, I'll turn it back over to you when we get a couple more people back on. Councilmember Cordero, I see Madam Mayor Carlos Escobedo, councilmember.
We can actually, Eric can just take back over. He's going to be going on to the that schedule, so.
Okay, perfect.
I'm back with you. This is Mike Cordero.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody, for joining and we'll let Eric jump back in and get started. And then Eric, let me know when you want to hear from public comments or hands raised and council members and staff, if you have any comments or questions, just raise your hand in the Zoom function and we'll have Eric address those at that time.
All right, you know, at the discretion of the mayor, of course, want to try and keep this informal. Typically, we do these workshops and we try and keep it informal. It's a little trickier here, so please jump in with questions as we're going through. But now how we go through is really up to how the council wants to go through. Because we can kind of look at similar blocks. So for instance, we can say, okay, we have these first four services and they're all different types of CUPs. And the fees range from currently about thirteen hundred dollars to about thirty-four hundred dollars. The new fees kind of range from five thousand dollars to twelve thousand dollars to do that cost recovery, that one hundred percent cost recovery. And so I don't know if the council wants to go kind of through each of these in detail. Or if we can more deal with, okay, here's the CUPs. Are there any problems or questions or any reason why you've there might be? Is is there a discussion or a reason why maybe there this should not be one hundred percent cost recovery? And so I I'll turn it back over to the mayor to get some feedback from her.
That's that's great. Put me in the hot spot. Um, I guess my my answer is going to be, I don't know.
Okay, but then let's try this. Let's let's kind of work our way through.
You know, Eric, I this is a council member, Waterfield, but I I would like to have our community director Chung chime in too, since he he absolutely understands these and he knows what it takes in regards to the application process and the fees versus maybe not a hundred percent recovery. What would what percentage would be a good percentage? And Chung, if you if you want to chime in, please do.
Yeah, that's a difficult question for a staff member. I feel like that should still be council policy direction. I'm happy to provide any clarification or explanation on the process or on the applications themselves. As Eric mentioned, you know, sometimes this is a reflection of the time spent and transparency is indeed expensive. I think back to the one request that we had, it was a U-Haul application going into the old Kmart building. You know, on the one hand, it may seem kind of simple and straightforward. But on the other hand, there's a lot of time spent just managing the public input, the public outreach, the public hearings, and sometimes that's what adds to the cost of these conditional use permit applications.
And you know, and I just just my response, because I just have to say this. That was unique in itself, only because there was a competitor that did not want U-Haul to come in. And so he rallied the troops and pretty much put them behind the eight ball in regards to this development coming through. But we don't have many of those types of cases, do we?
It just depends. Conditional use permits are conditional by definition and for a reason. And so if you look in our zoning code, our zoning code is structured so that in each zoning district, whether it's residential, commercial or industrial, there's generally two categories of uses, whether it's permitted or whether, well, three, permitted, not permitted, or conditional. And so if it's permitted, that there is some that there's no planning process, they can submit a building permit. If it's not allowed, they can't do it. But if it's conditional, it's it requires some level of discretion. And a lot of times it's because it's adjacent to, maybe adjacent to another use that requires some sensitivity. And so there's there's a reason why we have conditional use permits. It's because they usually require some level of judgment or discretion. And that requires usually the neighbors input. But you're right, I think the the U-Haul was was unique. But many of our conditional use applications still will warrant some level of neighborhood input.
Thank you.
Well, and you know what else too, is when they file, like, when they file the appeal and the appeal that that money is so, the the cost is so low, it's like no big deal. I mean, it's not like they have to think a second thought before, you know, you think, am I going to win this appeal or not? Um, and obviously it couldn't count to five, but I I think that is is an area when you start filing appeals that 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 can be increased, but I don't see that on here, but I did. I didn't read it in the study.
It is further down the list. That's correct.
Okay.
And so, I mean, obviously, the work study session, we're not there's we're not taking votes, we're not recording it, you know, we're not. This is all about getting feedback. This is all about answering your questions. And so that as you get to the point where we're going to be asking for, you know, some decisions, you'll feel more comfortable with that. So so let let me kind of back off as far as getting some, you know, for some clarification as to what whether you feel it should be a hundred percent or not. But just let's kind of go through here and kind of make sure we're answering any questions and make sure we have some discussions where where it need be, because the next group is kind of now we're talking some larger developments, planned development that goes to the planning commission and a combination of a conditional use permit and a planned development that either goes to the city council or somewhat smaller that goes to planning commission. So we have some some bigger dollar amounts there because these are big projects. Now, if you're doing a planned development, this is not just putting in a U-Haul. And so it's that's why the dollar amounts are kind of ratcheting up. But you're also doing a fair amount of these. You're doing ten a year of these and nine a year of these. And so it's it's not like you do one every couple of years and it's not that big a deal. These are turned into some some significant dollars at the end of the day. You know, that's the CUPs and PD that go to the planning commission, the conditional use permit and plan developments to go to the planning commission. It's it's right now, it's losing a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year when we add up all of those nine applications. And so that's why we put kind of put that those units there to kind of give a sense of how many of these do we do?
Yeah. You know, I I hear what you have to say and I and I understand that. But when you look at the current fees and suggested fees, it's such, it looks like it's a thousand miles away from each other. And you know, I I don't, I'm just speaking for myself. And I don't think that there should be a hundred percent recovery, although there should be some percentage of recovery or maybe gradually added into when annually to where we reached that point of of the suggested fee.
Yeah, because you can have a hundred percent goal, but for maybe if if it increases over a certain percentage, maybe if it increases more than fifty percent or whatever number that we phased it in over two to three years. But our goal is still a hundred percent, but we're going to take two or three years to get there. So yeah, that's definitely a possibility. That's definitely within your discretion.
You know, what else is important is it's been fifteen years. And I certainly agree that you've got to look at these things like every five years. A gallon of milk has increased in that amount in the past fifteen years. That it's amazing what it costs today. And, you know, I look at the city of Guadalupe did not want to increase their fees. They didn't want to increase, this was a couple of years ago, didn't want to increase utilities, several things. And they had they had to choose between putting it to the voters and or turning themselves over to the county because they couldn't no longer afford this, even though you know, nobody wants to increase tax. Well, I shouldn't say nobody. We live in California, but we we here in the city don't like to increase taxes. We don't, we don't want people to have to pay more than what they're getting in in services and we want to provide a good service. And at the same time, the costs have gone up for the city of Santa Maria, just as if they've gone up in my household or anyone else's household. But when you've not done this for fifteen years, it looks like it's just a huge, huge amount. And I guess, Chen, I could ask you, how does that? How do we compare in some of these areas with San Luis Obispo and with Santa Barbara?
Well, Mayor, I honestly, I haven't taken a look, so I don't know.
Okay.
I I can weigh in on that a little bit. It's it's very hard to compare two different agencies and multiple agencies. I I actually did this process with the city of Santa Barbara. And the caller early was correct, it's one of the most expensive fees around because they have this huge process. I mean, the design process is is larger than I've ever seen anywhere. And so the fees reflect the cost. They just have a lot more involved. But the problem is, is that not everybody defines the process the same. You know, there's a a conditional use permit is not the same from one city to the next city to the next city. I I I thought that would be the case when I about fifteen, twenty years ago, I had I had this big database of information. I wanted to go through and do what you just described. And what's the typical time it takes to process a condition use permit here, from here to here? And it was all over the board because every city defines it differently. Every city has a different code. And it was all over the board, because every city defines it differently. Every city has a different code. Um, and so it's very, very difficult to compare apples to apples. And so that's why I want to focus on, this is what it costs to do it here. Now it's question who's gonna pay for it.
And and then I guess, Chun, I would ask you, do we have codes? That are cumbersome? Do we have codes that we really need to clean up? And that we're not aware of, because we don't, we don't see these people come in and we're not there at the counters, but.
Yeah, Mayor, uh, absolutely. I I think there are uh, many opportunities to think about our processes. And and I would say that. And after we complete this general plan update. That will want an implementation tool, which is the zoning code, to match and to to better. To to line up with the goals and policy of the new general plan. Yes, there are many opportunities uh, to look at our existing processes. And and look for ways to be uh, efficient, but not just that, to. To still honor the integrity of the of the planning process, which has a built-in public process. And look at what needs. More review or what can be something that can be. Uh, just at a staff level. Or what can be, you know, just straight out permitted and and go uh, straight to a building permit process. There are many opportunities for that.
Um, the the next group here, these administrative downtown permits. My understanding and and Chun, please weigh weigh in. My understanding is that these were consciously subsidized by the the city council in the past. And um, we're recommending fees for these currently. So this would be a, we're asking for a policy change to. Uh, charge for these unlike what is happening currently.
Yes, uh, so Eric, it our downtown specific plan does a couple of things. Uh, one, it requires a downtown permit for um. Just about everything from somebody getting a business license to somebody uh, proposing a tenant improvement to an existing building. Uh, they're generally fairly quick, uh, but uh, we do work for many of these uh, applications. We. Currently do not collect any fees uh, for these applications. And uh, and there's also provisions within the downtown specific plan. That provides discretion uh, on the fees, but yes, there's. Uh, we do a lot of review uh, for uh. Uh, new businesses and uh, any type of uh, work uh, within the downtown area.
Yeah, cuz you're you're doing a lot of them. The the smaller ones don't take as much time and don't cost as much, but you're doing a bunch of them.
And the purpose for that, Eric, is to attract more businesses to the downtown area. That's what the special Pacific downtown plan was formed for is to how do we get people down there? How do we get people to build and create businesses in that area? Because we're trying to develop that area as well.
And and I don't know the answer to this, but my my question be, is it working? It is, is that policy do having the intended effects? And like I said, I don't know the whether it is or not.
Well, it has, we do have a a big development coming down the corner of Main and Broadway. We're just uh, they're waiting for the uh, builder to. Apparently, I guess it's financial situations and then with this COVID to get, you know, things rolling down there. And then we have another plan to come in and we just. Picked out a developer to come in and do a huge portion of um, how many acres is that, Jason, altogether?
Yeah, Chun, you?
Yeah, about four.
Yeah, 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 about four acres, yeah. So. Um, we'll see what happens there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we still have enough. I don't know if the just the fees alone helped us get to this point. We did, you know, the RFP process and other things, but it'll. We'll be able to work with this developer going forward to see how big the fee subsidy is for them to be able to do what we've we've hoped they would do.
Uh, I I think what's also unique about the downtown area is that uh. There are infill opportunities that are sometimes not very obvious that requires a little bit more innovation and creativity. And so uh, the reduction in the fees allows for someone to propose a concept. That we can look at uh, to, it it, you know, essentially ex- explore ideas for development, because they're not. They're not always your typical vacant ten acre site. It's usually something that requires a little bit more design and and more uh, innovation.
All right, and then there there are the the downtown permits to go to planning commission and city council. And their fees are very similar to the regular um, CU uh, conditional use permit and planned development fees up here, because. I believe their processes are very similar. They just happen to be in the downtown. Is that right, Chun?
Right, yeah. Uh, any type of development application tend to be very time intensive because of the. Uh, review analysis involved.
And you don't do a whole bunch of these. Uh, but they, when they do pop up, they take a fair amount of time.
Right.
Um, and then a variance, um, variance from the zoning code, so you don't do. Very many of these. We just had the one a year, but there is a big change from the current fee to the proposed fee. Uh, moving on to the environmental process. Uh, and this is something that, as we all know, the environmental process has changed quite a bit in the last fifteen years. And and so it's a lot more intensive, especially when you're talking about uh, initial studies and negative deck declarations. Um, they're much more complicated these days and almost everybody has to do a mitigated negative declaration. And they could widely vary in how much time it's gonna take. It's very hard to put a flat fee on these. And so. That's why we went with the initial deposit of eight thousand dollars with charges at the. Fully allocated hourly rates plus any outside costs if you have a few as an outside consultant. So basically just recovering your cost. For not only initial study, negative declaration, but the one below it for a full environmental impact report. Have a higher initial deposit, but it's still on an actual cost basis. All right, then we move into the map process. And so uh, we will have separate. Um, tentative map fees and final map fees on the engineering side, because there's the the work that's done by planning. And there's the work that's done by engineering. So as we get further down the list, we'll see these same services, except they'll be engineering instead of planning. So here we're talking about a tentative parcel map. That, um, so this is a one to one to two to four lots being subdivided. It's fairly rel- relatively easy process, or I should say. It it's a process that has a lot of steps to it. There's all the conditions, there's all the the routing that needs to be done. A lot of people need to weigh in on it. Uh, which is why we have a a big change on. Not only the tentative parcel map, but down here, the tentative track map. And then we did add a fee that tentative parcel map can usually be approved by city council. But if it needs to go to city council comes, can usually be approved by planning commission. But if it needs to go to city council, we have this additional fee for those projects that require. Um, city council approval of that tentative map. The final map is when that comes back to be recorded. All the conditions, they need to show that all the conditions have been met, and then the engineering will do all the survey work. Our planning has a relatively smaller process where they're they're going back and double checking all the conditions. Um, and so there's no planning fee for that currently, and we're adding a planning component to the final or parcel map and track map. Then we move into the lot line adjustment. Um, again, adjusting the lot, the line between two lots of relatively relatively simple process, but it it's a process. So we'll have a engineering fee for this down below also. And the same thing for a lot merger where a fee doesn't currently exist for that. A pre-application. And so we have these these um, kind of three services here. That are kind of different levels of an initial review. So there's an administrative pre-application that's still is is staff intensive. If the staff has to. Spend the time to comment on some ideas. And more than ideas, you know, have a pre-plan of what the the developer is looking to do. And and so that's why we had the four thousand dollar fee. But because we want to encourage this process to kind of come up with any problems now instead of down the road. That all of this fee will be credited towards application fees if that project moves forward within the next six months. So. Want to encourage people to come in, use this process, but we don't want to waste staff time on things that just don't get off the ground. So we did the same thing with that, both if it's it a staff review or for those where they want a a planning commission um, feedback on their project. And the same kind of thing if they want city council feedback on their project. Uh, those you notice we we reduced the credit to seventy percent instead of a hundred percent, because these are fairly intense processes and they're not required to do. Um, administrative interpretation, substantial performance. Um, and so this is where the. Stop me if I'm wrong here, Chun. I believe this is if they're they're requesting an interpretation of the code.
Yes, a a formal interpretation.
And so there's all that process to go through for that. And again, that it's not required. Um, a sign program. So a new shopping center goes in and a sign program needs to be filed so to make sure all the signs are. Are, you know, fitting in together both aesthetically and and where they're placed and everything. And so it's more than just looking at a sign permit where you're looking at individual sign. You're looking at, you know. Ten to fifteen to even more signs and how they work together in a shopping center. And there's no fee for that current. And then we have the individual planning sign permit, and and this is our first fee that's going down. So it's currently a hundred and eight dollars and looking at the process and how it's done today. Um, it only costs ninety dollars, so we recommend that this be go down. And just as a side note, if you if you do nothing else, you have to lower the fees that are that show we're charging too much. Um, and so that will, even if you decide not to raise any of the other fees. All right, then we get into landscape plans and kind of tried to simplify this a little bit. There's kind of, there was three existing categories that we that we put into two categories based on square footage. So that's reviewing the landscape plans for onsite development. Then we get into amendments. And so these are changes to approved plans. So a sign program was approved and they want to come in later and make changes to that sign. Program, that process there. And. If it's a any any application that goes to the planning commissioner, city council, or any administrative application would pay eighty percent of that original application. Because what they're asking for could be really all over the board and it really depends on what was that original application. So that's why we. Tied this fee to that original application fee, because there's still that process you have to go through, just as not as much um, upfront work. All right, then we get into the temporary activity permits. And. And and these, I'm gonna pull up on the screen here, cuz I don't remember unless you do, Chun, what each one. Um, cuz I know, I remember we spent a fair amount of time on trying to define what each one was.
They could be anything from a uh, uh, Christmas tree lot or uh, garage sale.
Right, so for our over the counter, for barbecue, garage sale, flower sales, and temporary signs. And that's where it's going from a hundred and eight down to forty-five. So we're lowering that fee for the very simple ones. For the minor ones, such as for holiday sales and model home sales office. This one is also going down from four forty to one seventy-five. And then for our major, for carnivores, construction trailers, temporary storage, offsite auto sales. This one is also going down from eleven ninety-four to seven hundred. So this is where staff um. Went back and took a look at, okay, what is what is the process that we're doing here? And this is one that actually took less time than than was calculated in the past. And then for uh, business license review, so it's the zoning review that planning does for every um, new business that's in town. There's the standard. Um, review of forty-five dollars and the supplemental review of ninety dollars. So this is one where. For some businesses, it's going up. For some businesses, it's going down. I'm sorry, for the standard, they're all going down to forty-five. Uh, public convenience and necessity finding. This is a uh, alcohol related business. And I believe it's a one-time application. Is that right, Chun?
Yes.
Yeah. And so there's a big process that goes through that. So if one uh, carnival or festival, they're doing a. A certain amount of alcohol, there's all the process played with that. So that's fairly expensive, but you don't do a whole lot of them. All right, appeals. Currently, if you're appealing a staff decision to the city count to the planning commission. It costs you three hundred twenty-nine dollars. We're saying it costs about six thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and we put in a hundred percent cost recovery in this one. And so. This is obviously one you guys will want to think about and talk about um, as to is this. You know, many cities subsidize this, cuz they don't want to to um, limit. People's ability to to um. To be able to talk to the planning commissioner and city council. Um, so didn't know if we wanted this to stop here and and have some feedback, or if you if you want me to just keep moving on. Both on this one and the next one appeals city council, which is a twelve thousand dollar fee. Okay, I'm not hearing anything, so I'm going to move on, but I know this is one you guys will want to revisit. Times. I'm sorry, I can, you're broken, you're breaking up, Jason.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Eric, what was your question again?
I just didn't know if the council wanted to discuss anything with in regards to the appeals. Or any questions.
I don't have any. I have a individual who's that uh, the caller, uh, call in user. Uh, but I've not been able to get that uh, individual um, one, you know, I request them to unmute. Um, so maybe they're having some technical diff- difficulties on their side, so I'm not able to get through to them. So right now, we have no one who has any other requests to speak um. Um, with hands raised, and I don't have any specific comments in the chat.
All right, then I will keep moving forward.
Yes, can you hear me now or I was, okay, yeah, I was jumping. Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah.
Um, but I think, Eric, to your point, um, and I think it is a good point that. If if you charge the full cost for an appeal, it makes appeals prohibitively expensive. And there is some public value. I think what I'm trying to do is just kind of put a finer point on your question to help frame it for the council. Um, there is some public value, so we do want to subsidize the fee. But if you get down to where it's our current amount of three hundred bucks. Um, is that too much of a subsidy? Or do we? It do we want to make it easy for the neighbors primarily to be able to appeal and have their day in court and be able to make their case? Um, but or but we also want to not encourage people to just. Go ahead and appeal everything because it's cheap and they can get away with it.
Yeah. Yeah, there there is a price point where whether it's five hundred or a thousand dollars. Which which will kind of get you to what you're that balance you're looking at. And you could also, you know, bifurcate it where if the applicant's appealing its full cost or a a higher amount versus a resident appealing, it's not as high. So there's different options there. All right, uh, moving on then. Um, the time extension reconsideration. So this is an existing project that needs to extend their their um, pro- project. And if it's just staff level review, it's one thing, but if it has to go back to planning measure city council, there's all the process. Related to that. So that's why the cost really jumps up there. If the if there's a continuum.
Do we have, do we have very many of those, Chun, where we have time extensions?
We do.
Yeah, because I I I don't want to bring up a particular one, but you know which one I'm talking about, because I've called you about it several times. It it's just that i- if they're gonna do it, I want them to do it. If not, but but if they keep doing these time extensions. And they're only two hundred and eighty-four dollars, maybe they will think about doing what they need to do or what they told us they were gonna do.
Yeah, and Mayor, our our code was modified within the last a year or two. So that uh, when a project is approved, they have three years. So but if they don't. If they don't start within the three-year timeframe. Then they do need to submit for a time extension, and then there's only two more opportunities after that. Uh, it's it's three, two, two. Uh, so um, it it's designed to try to encourage uh. Project applicants to to get started. Uh, but also the three-year timeframe is also longer than the previous timeframe. So that they don't have to come back to the planning commission. So that they don't have to come back to the planning commission to go through that review process again.
And you know, I understand, you know, like in two thousand eight, nine, when we started going through the recession and and. I understand why people were asking for a time extension. And to consider that. But are we offering them too much? Or should we cut that down?
Yeah, that process was adequately discussed between the development community and the planning commission. And I think they got to a point that. Where they can agree on the timeframe that works for them.
All right. And then there's a continuance requested by the applicants. This is if they come in, the applicant comes in at the last moment for a public hearing and decides they want to push off the public hearing after the public. Notification has gone out. And so the public notification has to be redone. And so that's what we're just recovering the cost on here. General plan maintenance. This is one where there's, there's currently a surcharge of five percent on building permit fees and that money is then set aside to help update the cost of updating the general plan. We're recommending that that fee stay the same, which means it'd be about a fifty percent subsidy. So with the idea that. When you update the general plan, a big reason you have to update your own plans because developments happen. But a big part of this is just the community changes and there's a community benefit to to updating the general plan. And so that's something where there's a fifty percent subsidy. On this, otherwise we, you know, we'd get ten percent surcharge instead of a five percent surcharge. Building plan check. And so this is the bulk of almost everything the building and safety does. We're right around a hundred percent cost recovery. So we're not recommending changes to all of the various different fees. So. There's all of the new construction fees that are based on square footage and based on construction type. And there's also the various miscellaneous and mechanical, electrical and plumbing fees. Or, you know, you're doing a new fireplace or you're doing, you know, just a tenant improvement. In your business or your house and or at doing a room addition, or when we get down to some of the others, all the, you know, putting the water heater in. So we're recommending that all those fees stay unchanged. We are also recommending the creation of a new surcharge for technology, for community development technology. That money, this money would be, it's a two and a half percent surcharge on building safety fees. That would be set aside to be able to for a new permit system for that apartment, or if there's new tablets that are needed or anything technology needed. But usually mostly because of permit permitting software, which tends to have a five year life and is very expensive. And so to the extent that the city can be setting aside some money for that purchase would make it a lot easier to do that when it comes up. So that's what this fee is for.
And I mean, the logic behind that is we put in. As capital funding taxpayer money investment in order to make some efficiencies and some of these improvements. And we're seeing, am I still breaking up? That looks like on my side. No, okay, sorry. And so we're able to do more work in the field and get quicker answers to the customers out in the fields. And that's an improved service. And we want to be able to maintain that service level. And I think talking to folks and putting that in here is a relatively inexpensive way. To be able to maintain and enhance that service to the customers out in the field and. Shorten the review processes and inspection time.
A new meter set initial read. So this is when a new water meter goes in because it's a brand new house. And the work that the building department has to do to kind of get that system in, get that meter into the system and. And going. So that's what that fee is for. Development fee estimation. This is literally if someone wants the city to precisely tell them how much their development fees are going to be and. Research it and basically do their work for them. This is a voluntary thing. And so. It's not a big fee, but it does take time of staff to do it. And the same thing with the building plan copy. It's a building plan, so it's copyrighted by a design professional. So you can't just make a copy of it. You have to get permission from that design professional. And so that's becomes a little intensive process. So it says hundred and seventy dollars per plan. Plus fifty five dollars if there's more than one design professional that you have to go back and get permission from and then plus the actual cost reduction. So that it's, it always seems like that should be a simple process, but it is because it's copyrighted, it's not. All right. So that's building. So now we're moving into engineering, public works engineering. And so we have a whole different, a whole bunch of encroachment permits. So. Here we starting out with sidewalk. If you are putting in new sidewalk, you know, where there wasn't sidewalk already. It's on the public right of way. So the city needs to inspect it, make sure that it's being done properly because it will eventually become part of the public right of way. That people, that members of the public will walk on. And so there's various inspections along the course of the process from the, you know, when they put in the forms to when they pour it to the inspection afterwards. So that's why we have a kind of a blocks of fifty linear feet. For sidewalk, same kind of thing for curb and gutter. For putting in a new driveway approach. Commercials are are larger, so they take more time. It's that great. It's it's more inspections also. So when we, when we talked about this with the engineering staff, it was, it was more, okay. How many inspections do you typically do for one of these permits? How much time are you on site for each inspection? What's your, what's your one way drive time, an average one way drive time over the city? Because you're going from one site to the next site to the next site. Because we want to capture all their time and the drive time, you know, has to go to someone. And so it goes to that applicant you're driving to. And then that that next drive time becomes the next applicant that they're driving to. So that includes not only the the inspection time, the onsite time, but the drive time to get there. Then we get into more of the, that was more the concrete word above. This is more of the asphalt work. So more of the utilities. Doing trenches or patches or potholes or bore pits. And then, you know, and then all the water connections as part of that. And so we kind of broke this out to its component pieces to be able to more finely define it. Tempering portion permit if you for dumpsters and pods. Or sand piles or moving trucks or whatever the case may be where you want to temporarily. Place something in the right of way, usually on the street. Then we get into public improvement, which is the same kind of thing. We're just talking about just larger projects. So before it might have been a homeowner or a business that was just doing some sidewalk. Now we're talking about a development, maybe a subdivision that's putting in all these streets and all new curb and gutter. And maybe even storm drain and water sewer. And so it's tied to the valuation of the project. And so it's, and it scales down as the project gets larger. So we're kind of trying to bend the curve. So that's what's happening both on the inspection side and on the plan check side. Then whenever they're working in the, in the right of way, they especially if it's on an arterial street or collector's street, you'll need a traffic control plan inspection. To make sure that all the traffic control devices are safely installed. And so that's what this fee is for, whether it's a residential street arterial collector lane closure. Arterial collector street closure, kind of a flat fee plus so much per day. Then we get into grading. And so this is the onsite grading. If someone's building a house, they need to grade that site. If it's just a rough grading, it's a flat fee. Following that would be the fine grading and that's that what is more work and it is more determined by the size of the lot. So that scales up by acreage. The same thing on the inspection side.
Eric, council member Carlos Escobedo has his hand raised and would like to make a comment or ask a question.
There you go. Thank you, Eric. I would like to, can you go a little bit up? Yeah, no, on traffic, what does traffic control plan check and inspect? What, what does that add? Can you explain a little bit more about that one?
Yeah. So when you're, let's say a utility is doing a street cut in the street. They need to put up traffic control devices to, because they're going to be closing a lane. And so they need to put up traffic control devices to safely get traffic around that cut. And so if it's of a certain size, they need to submit a formal traffic control plan. And so that's the plan review piece of it. And then what on the inspection side. When they actually put in the traffic control devices, the barriers and such. You know, the inspector will go out the first day and make sure everything's set up correctly. But if it's out there for the next week, he needs to go out there every day to make sure everything is still set up correctly. So that's what they're doing here.
Thank you.
All right. So we talked about the grading. So then we get into the storm water. So there'll be much more stormwater stuff when we get further down with the utilities. But here we have the SWPP or the solid stormwater protection plan. BMP inspection, best management practices inspection. So these are all, you know, you see a construction site and it's got sandbags everywhere and different kind of. A bump track to knock dirt off the tires. So they're required to set up all these best management practices to to. Keep as much dirt onsite as possible and not into the storm drain. And so someone needs to go out and inspect that. And that's what this fee is for. And it's really more based on. The inspectors looking at that job and saying, okay, this job's going to be here for six months. We're going to be going out once a week. And this therefore to cost this much. And it's so that's what we say, based on the estimated hours. It's more that job estimate where the staff is looking at that project at the beginning and doing an estimate of how much time it's going to take. Same thing with the post mitigation inspection is that that stormwater inspection for any stormwater devices that that. That need to be inspected after the project's done. And so here's that those parcel maps and final maps we're talking about earlier with with planning. So the applicant would pay for a tentative parcel map would pay the planning fee, which is up above. And the engineering fee, which is here, because they're kind of looking at different pieces of that project. And so that's why we, this is kind of in two different places. And the same thing with the tentative track map, although it scales up based on number of lots that 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 subdivision. Has in it. And the same thing on the final parcel map and final track map. This is. More expensive than on the planning side because this is really where engineers did all of their work as far as the survey work and the beats and bounds. So there's a lot of expense for engineering for these final maps. Same thing with the lot line adjustment, a lot merger, where you have the survey work because you're changing the lot lines. Certificate, certificate of compliance, this is kind of a standalone. If it's usually it's grandfathering in an old. Substandard lot or whatever, something of that nature. So you don't do a lot of these, but it's, that's what this is for. And Kevin, please jump in if I'm getting any of these wrong.
You're doing good.
Okay, map amendment. This is if someone, the maps being recorded and you want to go in and they. Maybe they put a marker in the wrong spot and they need to move it over six inches. They need to do a map amendment and re-record it. And so it'd be a relatively minor change to an existing map. Reimbursement map agreement. And so this would be for, gotta help me with this one, Kevin, do a larger project. Kind of a, is this a vesting kind of thing or?
Right. This is the setup. So if there's a improvement that is serving a large, more than just the one, one development, it's it's searching a large. Another a number of developments. And the, the applicant would like to get reimbursed by future development. We, we can do that. We could, we record a map and set up what the percentage of reimbursements for all, for those future lots would be. So it's. It's kind of managing the process and then recording that document to make sure they're reimbursed appropriately.
This fee is actually going down a little bit. Street or easement abandonment, that's if the applicant wants to request that a portion of street or easement be abandoned. So it's a fairly intense process. Creating a dedication or easement as part of a development project is what this one would do here. Review of a traffic study. This is one that is more tied to consultant that the city brings on actually does most of the work, but city staff still has to review it. So we have the consultant gets paid a hundred percent of what their fee is, but then the city review fee is ten percent over that. For its review of that consultant's work. Because these could just really widely vary as far as how much it costs. And we have some appeals. So we have appeal to the traffic committee of from staff. And appeal the traffic committee decision to city council. So there's no fees for these currently. And we're proposing some relatively modest fees. For these appeals. For trench resurfacing, this is if the city, if city staff goes in and has to. Do a patch in the street because a utility or somebody else. Put a trench or a patch in. So if it's a certain size, this is going to just recovery of the cost. To do it. And if it's larger than the thousand square feet, the customer can. Get an outside contractor to do that work. And then we have kind of a couple of catchalls to, for those things that may pop up that we haven't covered. So there's just actual cost bases for any miscellaneous services. Or any consultant, if you got to, if the, if the city has to send stuff out, be the consultant cost plus twenty percent. We added in some fines for work without an encroachment permit. Two hundred fifty, five hundred, a thousand. These are not cost based. These are fines. And meant to, meant to get people not to work without a permit. Public Works Administration, we have this similar to the traffic study above. This is that same kind of thing. It's just for any other studies that may pop up. To be able to tag on that extra ten percent for that extra review done by city staff. And then the truck, traffic model maintenance. The city maintains a traffic model that needs to be. Updated with, when developer, new development comes in and needs to be updated and changed to reflect the. The traffic conditions in the city going forward. And so the idea is that this fee would. Be a six percent surcharge on construction related CUPs and planned development. So those fees we had at the very beginning that were construction related. Are really the users of this service and and generate the reason for these updates being needed. So we figured a six percent of those fees up above, those handful of these up above would recover this cost for those people that use it. All right. So that is community development. So that's the, that's the big chunk. I mean, that is. That's about if, if all the recommendations from above were put into place, that would be one point five million dollars in new revenue to the city annually. So next is public safety, code enforcement, police and fire. Are we, are we doing good? Are we moving forward or? Where, what's the consensus of the group?
Um, yes, we still have them no hands up to speak. Or have questions anyway.
All right, all right. All right. So that's moving to code enforcement. So we created a whole bunch of new fees for code enforcement. And part of it is, you know, the, these are all cost recovery based fees. This is the amount of time spent on a code enforcement inspection and inspection warrant. Abatement warrant processing. But the, and really all of these here, the lean setup. But the point of them really is to get the property owner to deal with their problem. There's a problem there that, you know, if, if code enforcement officer has to keep going back out and back out. If we have these hundred thirty five dollar fees and say, hey, these fees are adding up and you're going to need to pay him at some point. Or just fix your problem. If we need to get an inspection warrant because we can't get on, you won't let us on a property or we can't see the issue, but we know there's a problem. And we got to get an inspection warrant. There's a cost to that. Fix your problem. If, if we got to get in a warrant to be able to do an abatement because you won't do the abatement you should do for your property, there's a cost to that. Fix your problem. And so there are. You know, some revenues that are being estimated here, but they're really not, like, for instance, on the code enforcement inspections. City does twenty six hundred code enforcement inspections a year. They cost a hundred thirty three dollars each. So. We're not saying that the city is going to recover that revenue because the goal of code enforcement, of course, is to have if everyone complying with the code and having a safer community. We're just using fees as a tool to be able to get to that end. Code enforcement appeal, if someone doesn't like what the code enforcement officer that said, and they want to appeal that decision there, there's, we've set up a new appeal fee. A compliance order hearing, same kind of thing, although we, there wasn't really any distinction between stage one and stage two. So we just have the one fee. Unpermitted construction special investigation. So if you're able to pass through those costs because people are out there doing inspections without permits. And, and. Without permits and and, you know, maybe do it on the weekend and code enforcement staff has a actual doing investigation, there's cost related to that. Special business inspection, so again, if there's something that's. Some code enforcement issues related to a business, that would be related to that. We debate. Same similar code enforcement, the fees are really designed to get people to do what they're supposed to do, so the city has, doesn't have to come in and clear it. Right now, there's no fees. And so we're saying hundred ninety dollars plus actual appearance cost. And then if a lien needs to be filed to recover those costs. Then there's that texture fee for the lien processing that's related to we debate. For the code enforcement fines, we made some changes there, there's currently municipal code fines and building code fines. We've consolidated those into one schedule of two fifty, five hundred and a thousand. And again, just meant to get people's attention and get them to fix their problem. Alright, fire, fire has a, does a bunch of stuff. They can do all the fun things.
Oh Eric, sorry, these are council members, can you please go up a little bit? Yeah, on code enforcement fines, so right now, we do not. Charge for any fine that the code enforcement.
Yeah, currently there are the, there are these fines here in 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 this column, in in the under the current fee here. And so right now it's broken into municipal code fines versus building code fines. And so municipal code fine, we're talking more along the lines of a, you know, you're you're leaving your 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 car. Abandoned car in the front yard. Versus a building code fine where you're you're building without a permit, basically. And so right now you see there are two different dollar amounts for two different things, and these are in the city code that would need a code amendment to change. And so it's really just consolidating them and to make the municipal code fines more effective. The one hundred, two hundred, five hundred is, we're hearing this just not getting people's attention. And so they felt that it needed a little bump to to be more effective.
Thank you.
Alright, and then we get into, get into fire, so this our fire sprinkler system, so this is the installation of a new fire sprinkler system, usually because of new development. And the plan check and inspection of that, of that installation of those sprinkler systems. And it scales up based on the number of heads, sprinkler heads within that system. And there's a base, if it's a new. Brand new sprinkler system versus a TI or tentative improvement. We are adding on to an existing system. Is what we have on that one, so these fees are, this fee is actually going down a little bit, that depends on where you are at on the scale. But for the smaller people, it's getting lower and it's going up a little bit for the for the people that have the bigger additions. And then we have just a number of different pieces of, you know, of fire protection system, so the stand pipe, if it's a standalone stand pipe, that's part of a sprinkler system. Then then that would be an extra fee which doesn't just currently, and same thing if it's underground piping. If there's an underground piping that's not part of a new system, because a new system may come with a a stand pipe and an underground piping. But you may also get ones that they they come in just with the underground piping system, and there's no fee for that currently. Then we have some fire protection systems, whether it be a fire, fire cycle system or a dry chemical system. Or a wet chemical system, just get various different types of fire protection systems. With the both the plan check and inspection of those systems. Fire alarm system, same thing, fire line monitoring. A kitchen hood, you know, like at a restaurant, a big kitchen hood. The plan check inspection of that fire suppression system. Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, if it's appropriate time, I have a caller. On online, he's got their hand raised, maybe we can give them, see if we can. Get this opportunity to. Allow them to. Speak if if they can.
Okay.
I've asked them to unmute themselves.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm just a quick question, I was informed that are any of these fees going to affect the water, the trash? For people to pay? Are the fees that you're trying to enforce going to affect the people who are working hard, people who have lost their jobs? Businesses that unfortunately are not in business right now due to COVID. And another thing too, do you think it's wise? To talk about increasing this right now, due to the fact that there's a lot of people that are struggling. You know, thank God I still have my job and I am able to pay my bills, exactly like all of you. Are working and getting paid, but there's a lot of people in the community who are struggling. So my two cents is, is it wise to do this right now? I know that's something that it has to be done, but. It's the COVID nineteen, a lot of people are not working, are not getting paid like they used to. And once again, is this going to affect at the water bill? The trash, that people are, you know, common people who are working hard are going to have to pay more. Money that they don't have, money that they need to in order to feed their families. I honestly hope that you guys could consider that because it's easy when people are getting paid. And for for us to make decisions, for you to make that decision. But I'm sure that if the shoe was on the other side, where you were struggling to pay your bills, feed your family. And then having to pay more, I think the decision would be a little bit, a little bit more different. So I hope you, you know, take my consideration, think about what I'm saying. I mean, I do understand, I I'm. I'm sure you guys all think of that, and I I'm sure you all have thought about. The increases that you guys are trying to do. But I guess my main point is, you know, the common people who are working hard. These other fees that I'm listening to are, you know, I guess it's the companies, people that actually do have money. But if it's gonna affect the water, the trash, anything that the common people would have to pay more. Then I think that's gonna be a huge concern on the community, you guys are there for the community, I understand that the city has to run. With taxpayers' money, I do understand that. But at the same token. Working for the community, not trying to tax them to death. In order for the community to continue to run. So that's my two cents, hopefully you guys take that to consideration before you make a final decision to enforce these fees on people. The common people who work hard for their families.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, and so thi- this does not affect the water rates, this this does not affect the refuse rates. This, when we get further down, we'll see we have some utility related, and these are more. Those extra levels of service, whether it be a, an extra trash pickup because you can eat your trash can out in time. Or an extra dumpster pickup because they're generating more trash. Or, you know, on the, you know, people that are are. On the delinquent water side, if it's. Doing, you know, damaging the meter and those kinds of things, so. It's those kinds of, it's it's kind of the, what we defined as the extra things, the council will define at the end of the day, whether that's true or not. But what we defined as the extra things that right now the rate payer's paying for, everybody in the community, for those few people that are really getting extra service. Okay.
Thank you, Eric, I I don't show any other panelists or attendees at this moment wishing to speak. There, this might be appropriate time for me to let you know that we. Did receive three written communications that expressed concern. About. User fee increases being proposed for leisure and cultural programs and services. We received one from Jerry Coats, Michael Ashmore. And Amy Sage, the of the latter two were representative of the Santa Maria Swim Club. And they're concerned about rate increases that impact youth leisure activities and. Their abilities to keep their clubs open and kids having. Programs offered to them at reasonable rates, so we received those three written communications.
Thank you, and I and I do want to reiterate that we're not recommending any fee changes to the recreation programs. Alright, so moving on with the the various fire plan check inspections, and so these are all basically new. Systems that are being installed that that make that facility more fire safe, whether the kitchen hood. High pile storage at a, like a warehouse, making sure that those fire protection systems are appropriate. Fire hydrant test, load test witness for a new fire hydrant on private property, private hydrant. A new occupancy or tentative proven fire plan check inspector, this is basically fire department review of building plans. And right now it's just a flat fee regardless of the size of the development or the project or the the plan. And so we're gonna scale this to the the plan check fees, the building fees. And so it'll be thirty five percent of the building fees, and so smaller, smaller projects that actually have plans will will not feel this as much, but the larger projects will have a. Larger increase here to cover that fire review of those building plans. And then we get into kind of more inspections of existing. Systems, so inspection of a kitchen hood system of a high pile storage, these are more annual inspections. Fire permit, and so these are various business inspections that have. You know, explosives or they're doing aerial fire loads, so they have inks and wells, and so there's various different things in the fire code. That require extra checking by the fire department to make sure that that business is operating. With those conditions safely, and so this whole long list of different fire permits is related to that. And then there's this general fire code permit that's kind of a a catchall, there's. There's kind of a base, which is most of the fire code permits in that in the fire code, and then there's some of them that take more time that are listed above. And then we have life safety inspections of annual life safety inspections of hotels, motels. And so it's currently two forty three, and we're saying if it's, if it's a smaller complex, that that fee will go down. If it's over thirty units, that field go up somewhat. So this is when we're trying to scale more based on the size, both for hotel motel motels as well as assembly occupancies. Like like various different places that have gatherings of people. Same type of thing for Haznet facility, this is one where it was broken out to different types of chemicals or numbers of chemicals in the past, and really it just came down to it. It didn't take that much more time regardless of the number of chemicals. Multi dwelling, multi family dwelling inspection, apartment inspections. So there's these currently fees that scale it based on size of units. And we're we're recommending those fees roughly, roughly double. Maybe in in some cases triple, so these are the annual inspections of apartment buildings. Of those of those dwellings, so the fire safety inspections of of more the. Not not the individual units, but the more the hallways and exterior, to make sure that those apartments are fire safe.
Let me ask you something, and Eric, you may not know this, but. Jason, how often do we do the multi family dwelling inspections for the apartments?
Actually, I think Chief Tuggle might know that.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, those are once a year, so for our two inspections, those are a state mandate that are completed annually.
Do we ever do? Go into any of the units when we inspect?
No, we do not.
That probably would have saved us a big headache with with what we had to go through over on the east side of town, but. What about if we have a complaint?
Hmm, what kind of complaint would it be?
Say there's open, there's open electrical wires or there's just cold water or the plumbing isn't. You know, substandard or.
I can't really speak, educate, give you an educated opinion on that or an.
Code compliance.
That that would be code compliance, and generally when we get those complaints, we do do the inspections. It may be for health and safety and it may be for fire.
I can barely hear you, Tom.
I'm sorry, what I said was, which is rare for me. Normally that would be something that we would do as health and safety.
Okay.
And so it's not always fire, it might be just a, just a standard. Dangerous situation.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a question, how often do we do the hotels and motels? Inspections.
Ideally, they're every year, however, because they're not mandated to that timeframe. They're typically between three and five years on the on the inspection cycle. With the staffing, the loss of the fire marshal and one of the FPOs two years ago, I believe. That cycle has gone down, so we we do get them, but just not as often, so it's it's anywhere from a three to five year cycle.
Okay, and so the apartments are mandated, but the hotels and motels are not.
Going in the same way, the motel, the. The. The apartments are mandated as an annual inspection by the state, the other ones are mandated through fire code. So slightly different mechanisms.
Okay, thank you.
And then the same kind of thing for the board and care homes. We're kind of trying to scale that one up, the daycare facility. Still based on number of occupants. The convalescent hospital where it scales up by number of beds. Other hospitals, other than convalescent hospitals, kind of a, so kind of more your your emergency typical hospital. So that's these going up. Public and private schools. It's whether it's elementary or secondary, secondaries, you can figure it takes longer to inspect. And other state mandated inspections. Drawn a blank, but you know, it's basically institutional. Jails, but also other kind of public facilities and institutional facilities. Am I getting that right, chief? Anything to add on that one?
Yeah, so there are, so like for the schools, for instance, those are state mandated, that's a part of the Title nineteen requirements. So we do have to inspect those facilities each year, so there's the the. The fire and life safety inspection includes like a sprinkler inspection, make sure the alarm works correctly. You know, things of that nature, and the other state programs would be any other. Any other programs that fit under a state requirement of a. Building within the city, not necessarily state property, but fit underneath a state, under a state mandate.
And so Eric. Just while we're in the fire part here, so I think. One issue with fire, then you're hearing a little bit from Chief Tuggle, is there are certain. Inspection requirements mandated by the state. That we don't have the fee fully covering. And so that's a new state mandate that's basically put on our taxpayers. And should it be put on the business being inspected? And then going back to Councilmember Waterfield and Mayor Patino's questions is, the frequency of the inspections are impacted by. These fees being so low, so if the fees up in those green ones, for example. Were adjusted, it would allow the fire department to have that additional inspector like they used to have. To be able to meet the legal requirements of the inspection period either annually or. Or whatever the hotels were triannually, I think you said, but. So I mean, that that's a direct service that we're not able to provide and. And as required.
Yeah, and and kind of dovetail into that, and you know, we do have, we do, we are a part of the planning process. So we do have, you know, a certain level of planner review, nothing compared to what, you know, Chen's group does, we do have a permit piece, which, you know, we actually do. Expect for, you know, a permit to occupy, and we do have a piece in that, but. The kind of the third wheel of that part for us is that we do these constant. You know, either annual, triannual, or you know, you know, every five year inspections, you know, we actually do. We do use a third party vendor to handle a lot of the sprinkler and. Kitchen hood inspections, that that doesn't even, that doesn't get reflected in our budget, but it is an impact to. The business, it's something that we have to, we have to farm that piece out in order to comply with the requirements. So yeah, we do have that third wheel as part of our inspection prior, as part of our fee sketch. So yeah, we do have that third wheel as part of our um inspection prior, as part of our fee schedule.
And then kind of tied into that, the next one, your engine company inspection. Most, most cities have their, their engine companies go out and do business inspections annually, so that you, you're touching every business in town annually. And uh, Chief just doesn't have enough engine company staff time to be able to do that. So. We only have one unit service, which is really just putting in a cost. So we're setting this fee up and we're potentially setting this fee up. With the idea that if it gets to a level where the staffing increases or there's enough time to be able to do these inspections, that fee will be in place. Ready to be used. But um, if, if the inspection doesn't happen, the business certainly will not be charged. Uh, but there are some fire business inspections, and this is more on the prevention side of things by fire marshal that does the. Uh, there are certain businesses that require an annual inspection and that they need to get to. We only have about thirty-six businesses, and so that's what this fee. Would be for. Um, business license fire review, just like earlier, we had a zoning review for, from planning for every new business. In town, this is the same kind of thing for that fire review of a new business to make sure that they're opening uh safely. Uh, fire code enforcement inspection, as you guys, as the fire committee comes across problems, you know, maybe the missing fire hydrant or blocked exits. And it tells the business owner they need to fix the problem to the extent that they're not fixing the problem. We're recommending a fee that kicks in after the third visit. Um, type over, um, so that's what that fee is. And additional fire plan review, additional inspection is just really a kind of a, for those applicants who are not getting their act together and. Uh, they've already been um two plan reviews and now they're, they're not listening to the, they're not fixing the issues on the plan. It requires another plan review or another plan review. And the same thing on the inspection side, if they gotta keep going out because they're not ready or they're not. Um, um, the inspection fails, then there's that additional fee for additional visits. Uh, fire false alarm response. This is um. You get one free one per year. Then we're just rounding that up to three hundred. And so this is like our code enforcement. Uh, services earlier, these are more meant to get compliance, um, not necessarily generate revenue, but. Um, so you have, you have your first free one. If you gotta, if the fire department has to come out again. Within the next twelve months, it's gonna cost you three hundred dollars. Uh, most agencies give you three free runs, free ones, um, but San memory has a history of. Uh, one free one, so that's where we kept that model. Um, fire investigation, and this is just if there's, if, if there's an arson fire and you're able to identify who did it, you can recover those costs. And this is more, um, if there's, uh, if an ambulance, this is a new fee recommended, and the ambulance needs to. Yeah, I'm not even sure if I remember this correctly. Let me pull it up. Unless, unless, unless you got it, Chief.
Yeah, I gotta be honest, I'm not sure exactly what the intent with that one is, cause I. I'm looking at the, the other fee schedule that was produced and I don't have that one.
Yeah, it's, it's a new fee that, that uh.
Yeah, this is typically charged to the ambulance provider, not to the citizen. Uh, and, and it because of the service we're providing to the transport agency, not the uh citizen who's being transported.
Right, so there you go. That ambulance needs an assist to the hospital. So, yeah, I didn't have a whole, whole bunch of these, but I guess wanted that in place to be able to um. Charge that if necessary and similar to.
What, ca- can you give me an example of that?
Um, a good example, Madam Mayor, would be um if uh, if somebody goes, has a heart attack and goes into cardiac arrest. Uh, their heart stops beating and we're performing CPR on that individual, helping breathe for them and the medic. In the back of the ambulance doesn't have the ability to, to do, to breathe for the patient, do CPR. And administer medications all at the same time, so.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
And then another emergency response is a lift assist, not emergency lift assist. And so this is a, like a nursing home where. Um, uh, the staff don't want to help that person out, so they call the fire department. Now, let's say they fall in the bathtub. And they don't, and they call the fire department to help lift this person out or help in that way instead of doing it themselves. Um, there's a current fee, say two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, but we've been told that it's not currently charging for most responses. Uh, we are suggesting a lower fee there. Um, anything to add on that one, Chief?
Yeah, this is, um, this actually ties into um emergency medical services policy countywide. Where um facilities, when they have a request like this, where they need to say transfer a patient. Um, or other non-emergent requests are supposed to go through a um. Go through the dispatch center, the countywide dispatch center for ambulances. Uh, we have found that. The care facilities here in the city tend to call nine-one-one. We do not have the ability to triage those calls at our dispatch center. So those calls go out for a code three lights and sirens response. From the fire station or where the fire engine is to the facility to help even in non-emergent cases. And so I believe Chief Champion's intent with this was some sort of mechanism to push and encourage. The facilities to comply with the um, the EMS directives.
So talk, uh, if it's the, the facilities. Um, they, they're the ones that should be taking care of that kind of non-emergency uh, the transport.
Correct, yes, exactly.
And instead of that, they're calling you guys.
They're calling nine-one-one and, yeah, a- and you know, a- and this is, we haven't charged for this typically. Because it's a service to the community, it's a service to our, to our constituents. Um, but when that. Transitions into a clear violation of, of policy, then. This allows us to use that mechanism to encourage our, our businesses to, to follow the, the, the channels that are available to them.
God.
All right, then we have fire DUI accident response, and we'll see I'm matching uh police one down below. Uh, you're allowed to charge up to twelve thousand dollars per response for emergency personnel. If it's a DUI accident, so this is just a cost recovery. So it's similar to what's in place now, it's just um. Make it so you can update the hourly rate as it, as it changes over time. Same thing with the small fuels cleanup and the hazmat incident response. This is just, you know, to the extent you're able to identify who did the spill, you can charge that time and cost back. Uh, fireworks booths. Um, the fireworks birth review and inspection, bumping that up a little bit.
Eric.
Yes.
We have a comment in the chats about if you add a new fee to the ambulance company that is not charged now. Doesn't it seem likely that the ambulance company will then turn around and charge the consumer?
Uh, there's a good chance of that, and it's a question of the, what, what the insurance company um picks up.
Yeah, the, the other, the other part of that too, to answer that question is that the rates are set by. The Emergency Medical Services Agency. So I can't say specifically yes or no, but because those rates are set through the contract. Um, there would have to be some, some leeway within the contract to allow such a um increase to their costs.
All right, uh, fire incident report copy. This is just matching up with what we're gonna see later for the, for the um. Citywide copy fee, and so just making the first ten pages free and then twenty-five cents a page after that. Instead of just having to always, you know, charging twenty-five cents or fifty cents and even track a change and. Spending more money accounting for it than the fee is itself. And so just saying for, for the vast majority of people, the fire incident report copy will be no charge. Um, fire, like the chronic file copy, same kind of thing. Uh, if they, if there's any files, uh, making copies of onto a disk, it'd be five dollars per disk. And that's fire. So moving into police. Uh, police false alarm response, so similar to the fire false alarm response meant to more get people's attention. Uh, we did bump this one up to be more reflective of the cost, but it is after the third response, you get three. Tries to get your alarm fixed, and then after that, it'd be three hundred and thirty dollars per response. Uh, police alarm permit, this is the, where people give their contact information about their alarms, emergency contact information about their alarms. And so it's currently fifteen dollars and not recommending any change there.
Hey Eric. Eric, if I could just interrupt for one minute, um, in. Uh, consideration of time, if maybe we could try to see if there's any questions on specific ones, then maybe we can get through, because. It's about four twenty-five or so, and uh, so not that I want to rush anyone, but.
Well, I think this is it, yeah.
Uh, well, this is police, and then after that, we have the utilities, and then we have administrative, and so many that we're not doing leisure and cultural today. Um, but I can, I can pick up the pace a little bit, because these next few are really all related to. Uh, businesses. And so they're kind of background checks related to special types of businesses where. We want to know as a community who's operating a, a secondhand dealer or a pawn shop or a gun dealer or massage parlor. Um, and those kinds of things. And then when we get to the tobacco retailer, so this was a new fee that was put in place recently. Uh, to cover that, not only that review time for a new business, but that ongoing review and enforcement and inspection time of an existing business. Um, the ABC one day license for, for alcohol. Taxi cab inspections. It's actually going down. Uh, repossessed vehicle releases set by the state, stored vehicle releasing, if your, if your car gets impounded, the release of that. Vehicle and all the time associated with that impound and release. Uh, so that fee is going up. Signing off a fix-it ticket, fees staying the same. Police DUI accident response is similar to our fire DUI accident response above. Concealed weapon permit, um, are, the fees are set by the state, so there's no change there. A clearance letter, a local background check, that fee is actually um. Uh, going up a little bit. Fingerprinting is staying the same. Police report copy is similar to our citywide copy fee, as is our police electronic file copy. Five dollars per disk. Any questions on police?
I have a question on the massage parlor. Can you back that up? Um, why did you go down on that?
Um, yeah, it just came down to how much time was being spent, especially with the state licensing. Um, there's farmer's review than there was in the past. And so that, I, I can't say what went into the past fee, but that's probably what's going on here.
Okay.
Um, like I said, let's skip over the recreation programs. Um, uh, thi- this really deserves its own discussion. I hope we're able to. Uh, do that. Uh, but I do want to quickly look at the library fees. Uh, because they are subsidized, but they're fairly straightforward. And so if we look at near library loans, um. You know, th- these are kind of set by the market too. If you set the fee too high, people just won't do it. Um, and, and there are certain things that are, are just won't pay attention to it. And so there are certain things we want them to pay attention to. Uh, but what, in our library loan, within the black gold system, no charge outside, keeping it at fifteen dollars. So that's about a thirty-four, thirty-four percent cost recovery. Um, if we went to a hundred percent cost recovery, it would be, you know, forty-five dollars and people just, it would just go away. Yeah, and so we didn't feel that that was appropriate. Same thing with these others also, library card replacement, keeping it at a dollar per card for fifty percent cost recovery. Overdue library material processing, keeping it at a quarter per item per day, which coincidentally is recovering about a hundred percent of the cost. So that's. Um, although it's more like our other kind of fines meant to re, get people just to return the materials. Uh, passports are set by the federal government. And the library room rental is a dependence at the back, and we could talk about that when we talk about recreation also, because we're trying to match up. Um, the current library fees, uh, make it more similar to the current recreation facility rental fees. And so. You know, there's some changes there, but not really more just trying to make it consistent with what, how recreation is charging their facility. Any questions on library? Okay, maintenance and enterprise services. And so as, as we talked about before, there, this does not include the water rates or the refuse rates. Um. There's a whole separate rate study that's done to determine whether they appropriate rates for that. And so this is kind of the over and above stuff, the extra things that. That could be, you know, right now, all these, all these fees that say none, that means all these things are being paid for by the ratepayers out of the current. Um, these are refuse, so the refuse rates. And so it's just a question of, do you guys feel that's appropriate? Or if someone is requesting a temporary dumpster bin, they should pay um. These fees here, cancellation fee. Um, and so it's, it's these kind of over and above, so that's what we're saying for a temporary dumpster. Uh, if they want, if they have to have a dip, uh, a gravity lock installed and needs to be welded on, then that's the cost there. If they want a um, a bigger um refuse container. Michelle, you have to tell me where I'm going according to this. Um, I believe that's if you want a bigger um container.
Uh, that's if there's a change from their size, whether it's smaller or larger.
Okay.
So our staff has to go out and swap out the container.
Great. Um, if they need an extra haul, because they just generated more trash than they, than they refuse, then they can. Then they would have done within their delivery period, and they request somebody to come out and pick up, do an extra haul of that extra refuse. If the container's overloaded and it requires extra work, you know, they just pack it in, it's piled high, and now when they go to dump it, it just makes a mess. And there's extra work related to that, in addition to the extra refuse, that would be what this is for here. And same thing with the solid waste cleanup haul in your disposal. If there's just a big mess and they gotta clean it up and be able to determine what those actual costs are. If the, the bin or the container's contaminated and needs to be cleaned out. There's fine trade to that, is that, is that, is that right? Or it's just they're putting the wrong things in the dumpster and taking it and bit.
Right, um, you'll notice up above that this is related to Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. This has to do with um organics and recycling. So we, we are required to. Uh, actually do inspections to make sure that people are putting the right things in the right bins. Um, so this would have to do with if people, um, you'll notice there that the fee starts to talk with a second or third violation. Our, our first intent obviously would be to educate people on, on the proper use of their bins. Uh, this would be an opportunity then to. Um, address that behavior if it continues.
Um, solid, the tub out service, there's no fee for this currently. This is if the, the, the. Solid waste ignition has to go back and pick the tub up out of the yard and, and try, drag it out or roll it out to and dump it and put it back. Is that right, John?
Uh, that is correct.
Yeah, and so setting up a fee for that, basically, um, people might, or not. Either having to put out their, their trash bin, or in some cases, maybe not able to put out their trash bin. So there's a consideration for that here also. I notice that this is at fifty percent cost recovery also. Um, recycle service only, this is if you're only requesting recycle service and just wanted to get that in there, that they still have to pay the monthly refuse service. Fee. All right, moving on to water, uh, construction meter rental, so if uh, for someone who's on a construction site and they need to get water. They need to have a, a construction meter installed by the city, and so it's just updating these fees. And um including that kind of the monthly rate fee, if that meter stays out there for once at a time. Uh, the review of annual reviews of fire meters. Water well permit for a new water well. And this is more with the, you know, property owner is doing damage to the meter. So if they're. Maybe they got turned off and they're trying to turn it, turn it back on and they break the angle stop, or they break the meter itself, this is about recovering those costs. From, from those people. Uh, utility agreement. Um, I'm sorry, I have to, you, you remember what this one is, Chad? I'll have to look it up otherwise.
I'd have to look, I don't know if that also encompasses the outside user agreement.
I think it might. Nope, review utility agreement. Um, I, I, I think it does.
Yeah. So these would be the, when not a typical water sewer service, this would be if someone were city council seen a couple of these recently, where, where people want a separate utility agreement, like an outside users agreement, and we don't really have a fee structure to collect staff time that's, that's spent on that type of work.
And so this would just be on an actual cost basis. All right, then we get into various wastewater permits there for certain types of businesses that have certain types of waste, so certain more chemical dangerous waste, and so there's the class three new and renewal. Inspection and reinspection, the pre-treatment hauler permit, new and renewal. If they need an access card at the septic station where they're dumping the, the waste. And then the class fours new renewal inspection, so these will be on certain types of businesses in town that have more hazardous waste.
Eric?
Yes.
A question, what is the the pre-trade class three permit, I believe it's the inspect? Yeah, this, yeah, the two, two oh five.
So there are, Councilmember Escobedo, there are multiple classes of sanitary sewer customers that we would have, and these are generally related to an industrial discharger, so if you had a, so you, you can see there that it goes class, class two, class three, class four, and that's the more virulent of the sewage that they might have, or the potential to put, for example, heavy metals into the sewer or things with high biochemical oxygen demand. So these types of facilities by city code are required to have pre-treatment services at their site. And we currently do not collect fees when they come in for a new project or building permit, they get routed to utilities to look at their pre-treatment function. So utility spends time, that's why we see there under the new, it would be permit review by utility staff, the renewal would simply be the annual renewal when we review that, and then we are also required to go out and conduct inspections, so there's essentially a fee associated with each of those types of activities. And as you can see, they, in general, when they get more sophisticated, a, a, a pre-treatment class four would be a much more sophisticated type industrial usage, so the, the cost to the city is higher to do that permit evaluation and renewal and inspection.
Thank you.
And then the quarterly sampling, so that based on different types of facilities, would the sampling would, would go up. The grease waste hauler tank deposit, so just that deposit that they take, city provides, just a deposit, refundable deposit to make sure that it comes back clean. The class four monthly meter reading. And then pre-treatment also reviews building plans. And so this was be related to the building, prestring on a building permit, as well as the actual building permit review. And so this would be added on to building permits for those, those facilities that needed this pre-treatment review. For if a new backflow device goes in to protect the water system from grease or waste. It's, there's the initial review, these related to that. And then we have a stormwater related, so a post-construction required annual stormwater report. If, if the facility has a stormwater mitigation device, some type of device that will filter out the stormwater, there's this annual review of and report of that. If a development requires a sewer flow analysis, of what their, what the sewage flow of, of that development would entail and how it would interact with the system, that, that's a actual staff estimate determined by looking at each project and coming up with a cost for that, because it can widely vary. If it's, if there's a request to, again, related to development, sewer main capacity verification, can the sewer main handle what they're proposing to put into it? And, or if someone wants to actually video a sewer lateral, there's a, suggesting a fee for that. So those are the utilities. Moving on to more, what we define as administrative, so we have some water-related things, it's just more on the billing side. So a new utility account setup, so new, this is actually going up a little bit from fifty to sixty. Delinquent water turnoff and turnoffs, this is the one I was talking earlier, there was limitation set by Senate Bill nine nine eight. On, you can't charge more than fifty dollars for a reconnection. But we, we are changing, as you see, changing around, right now, there's just a late payment penalty, but really trying to define that a little bit better. Where there's a late payment penalty of fifteen, five dollar forty-eight hour notice, if it gets tagged, it's twenty-five dollars. And then, then when it gets reconnected after turnoff is fifty dollars, and so as, as you're well aware, there's not charging for these right now, and so this would be something that when we get to a certain point, then you start charging for the recommended this kind of change in structure.
So, so in that way, I'm sorry to interrupt, so basically, first is a late payment penalty fifteen, and then if they done made the payment twenty-four hour, they have a twenty-four hour notice. That's a five dollars charge, and if they keep in the same situation. There's that tagging for twenty-five, and then the next that would be disconnection of the service, and then if they want the service back, they will need to pay fifty dollars?
That's correct.
So if I may, Councilman Escobedo, the, what you see there is those fees would be essentially an escalation. Right now, we have no late payment penalty, so the city is undergoing a significant expense when when customers don't pay. And then prior to COVID, when we would send out notices, we would actually have one, utility billing staff has to run the billings again, send out secondary notices, send out late notices, and there is no additional charge for that at this time. And then we would do an additional as we kind of work our way down that, right? When we get, when you get bills from any other utility, there's usually pay it within this time, or there's a late penalty fee. Following that, if, if you still haven't paid it, essentially about two months later, based on the timing set by state law, we would provide a forty-eight hour notice, and there's additional staff time and everything to do that, which would be the additional five dollars. Delinquent tagging is something that's something the city has always done, and it's only required by law if we can't contact a customer another way, and we literally send staff out and put a door tag on to remind people. What has happened in the past, frequently in the past, is that that was about when some of the customers would decide to come down to City Hall and, and pay their water or sewer bill, or water, sewer and garbage, in the case of Santa Maria. So as of right now, all of that expense of city employees to do that is a burden on the rest of the ratepayers who are paying their bill on time, because that's the only source of revenue for water, sewer and garbage, so the intent here is that as we have to have staff time to address these delinquent bills, that these bills, fees would be associated with it, to address it as they occur.
Do we know now? Sounds weird. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that started sounding pretty weird, my name. It, has there been any increase of these this non-payment before and now with the, during the pandemic?
Yes, there, there has been, and, and right, the, the timing's a little weird with COVID, no doubt, we are bound by the governor's executive order. At this time, the city is not allowed to shut off water service for non-payment. That has led to a higher dollar amount of delinquent fees. The information that we have from utility billing indicates that while we're seeing a, a smaller percentage increase in the number of accounts that are behind, the ones that are behind are behind by more months at a time. If they haven't paid for the, for the previous six months, for example. We are looking into that, Santa Barbara County, just two weeks ago. Entered into a grant process agreement through the state, and they're running that through the United Way to reach out, which is funding not only for rental assistance for people who have had issues due to COVID nineteen, it would also help with where they might be in arrears on utility bills, so our utility billing staff is definitely working with United Way to try to get that information out to people in the community and, and our customers that would be affected by that.
Okay, and then there's the after-hours utility turn-on, which is also limited by, by SB nine nine eight to a hundred and fifty dollars, so we're recommending if you go to that, cost is more like two hundred dollars, but not allowed to charge more than the one fifty. Water meter lock installation, if someone has been turned off for delinquent reasons. And then they're continuing to turn back on their meter themselves, the city will have to put a lock on the meter, so that's what that fee is for. If they still want to get into the water meter and they break that lock, there's the, you got to go out and fix it again and fix and repair the lock. So there's a cost there, and if they're still continuing to, to access the, the water illegally. It's, the city would go out and actually pull the meter, which of course would be a, a last gasp response. All right. For business license, there's the, there's the processing fee, so this is not the tax, but the processing fee for business license, it's currently twenty dollars, one to twenty-two. For the renewal process, this is something because it, it, there's a lot of time and update throughout the, throughout the year of keeping this everybody up to date, there's no fee currently, but there's a lot of processing time, and so we're recommending that fee be set at twenty-five dollars per renewal. Which, as you see, would generate about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in cost recovery for that service, but that would be a new fee. Change in a business license, so just a minor change there. If you want to duplicate a copy, that fee's actually going down a little bit. And then the good, good neighbor license, one of my all-time favorites. Are you supposed to notify your neighbors if you're having a party or loud? And so this is kind of a little undefined. But as far as we're able to tell, the process doesn't take as long as it was defined in the past, so this fee is recommended to go down also. NSF checks, if someone bounces a check or has a debit card charged back, there's a cost to the city for that, not only the, the city's bank charges the city, but there is a staff time to take that money out of the system. Correspond with that person who, who gave, gave the check, and eventually get that money back in, so we're recommending that fee go up to sixty-five dollars to cover those costs. And then credit card processing, this is another big one, this, currently the city spends about half, almost a half a million dollars on credit card processing fees. So when people charge their water bill, where they charge their capital, their developer fees on their credit card. The city is, is in addition being charged another about two and a half percent by the credit card company. And to the tune of about half a million dollars. And so we're recommending that that cost be recovered through the person doing the charging, in that if you're charging something, then you pay an additional two and a half percent. So that the taxpayer isn't picking up that roughly half a million dollars. So that's, that's a, that's a big new one there.
So, uh, yeah, this one really pop up when I was looking at, at this. So, so the company, so basically if I get it right, every time somebody pay with a credit card to any service at the city, that chart or that process, it's, it's being paid by the own city, right?
Right, it's just like, it's a merchant, like a merchant account, like a business has a merchant account, the merchant is paying a, a percentage of that fee. And, and, you know, they, they can pass it through on, on, on the what they charge for the things they do. The city doesn't have really that ability, and so this is, this is the way that the city can recover those costs instead of just the taxpayer eating it.
And so basically, if, you know, if we got through this, that a hundred percent suggestion. That means that if somebody pay, like say, a hundred dollar bill, there, will there be any charge? On like the next rep, it will add up something to that payment?
Yeah, so, so if they charge a hundred dollars, they're going to pay another two dollars and fifty cents, so instead of it being a hundred dollars, it'll be a hundred and two fifty.
Good, thank you.
Yes. There's a couple chat questions here, I think, I'm not sure if Ron is back yet, so let me see.
And it's from Mr. Frederickson, he says, does it not seem counterintuitive to charge citizens extra fees during a pandemic to make sure their utility fees are paid? Charging a credit card fee effectively increases fees, doesn't it?
This is Chad, I could address the, the first one, kind of regarding the, the charging the citizens' extra fees. These are costs that are being caused by people who aren't paying the bills, so the city is seeing increased costs to provide that service to that specific customer. If those costs are not paid by the customer whose bills are delinquent or who's causing that additional service, then essentially they're being subsidized or paid by all of those customers who are paying their bills on time, seems how that is the only source of revenue. So the intent here of getting these fees and setting these fees is so that those additional costs that are caused by the additional work, that are caused by the bills not being paid on time, or paid by the specific customers that are causing those increases to fees and not being spread among all the other customers.
And for the second part of that, the credit card, yeah, it, it is increasing the amount, it's, it, but it's recovering that cost that right now the taxpayer is bearing. And it's, it's to the tune of half a million dollars, so all those people that pay by check or paying cash are in essence paying part of that also. So that the, the, the person that pays by credit card can pay by credit card. And, and also feel, you know, it, it's, it's a relatively modest amount, and people will then have the choice if they decide they want to pay by check.
Eric, Councilmember Cordero's raised his hand and has a question or comment.
Thank you, Eric, I, I see that two and a half percent as a credit card charge, it's not a city charge. It's not more money that's going for the, for the service being provided, that's something that the credit card is charging for their service, am, am I correct there?
No, well, they're charging the city, they're charging the, the city two and a half percent, so, but let's, let's say I, I'm paying, I'm being charged a hundred dollars by the city, so I've decided it's easier for me to use a credit card, so I'm going to pay that hundred dollar fee by credit card. But now the city's only receiving ninety-seven fifty, because two dollars and fifty cents, they got to, they got to offset that credit card expense that's coming from the credit card company. And so it's just a question of that cost is occurring, who should pay for it, and right now the taxpayers.
Right, so, so in fact, it is a credit card cost. So, so in effect, by using your credit card, the convenience of that is that you're asking for as a, as a client, then that's something that, that you should pay, in my opinion. I don't, you know, I, I don't know how else to put that, there are many companies, many agencies that you are, products that you buy. And they will say, well, if you pay by credit card, there's an additional three percent, in some cases, two and a half, but but they will charge you more right up front when you're paying with a credit card.
Right, and so we're, we're just suggesting the same thing.
Right, and I, I don't see this as, I mean, you know, you can't blame everything on the pandemic, I mean, these are unfortunate times for all of us, but this is a cost that, that's being forced upon the citizens, taxpayers here that, that must be recovered, particularly telling us that it's a half a million dollars.
So, one question, do, can we change, or is, is there any way we can negotiate that two point five percent charged by the credit card?
Um, not really, I mean, they, they do offer utility rates for utility companies, but believe me, credit card companies have fought this tooth and nail, they've gone to the Supreme Court and lost. Um, so this is not something that they, they're willing to, at least that I've seen, willing to negotiate, I don't know if you've seen anything different, Mary. And so, um, and, and yeah, it's, and so it's, it's certainly something you could ask, uh, but it's, it's, you know, this is their business model and, and they don't want you to charge anything, they will fight you, they've threatened lawsuits on numerous cities over the years and numerous cities have fought back and finally kind of beat that down. But they don't want to do anything that makes it less possible, you know, that discourages people from using their credit cards, of course.
Uh, Eric Angie Hernandez from our finance department has raised her hand and has a comment or a question.
Thank you, Rhonda, I just want to add that the credit card fees that the merchant company charges the city um is really based on the volume, they ask us for estimates of how much we think a particular type of services, and that's how they determine the calculation and how much they're, they're going to charge the city for their different various rates that they, they charge, they charge us for, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Right, anything else with the credit card? All right, moving on, the city clerk has a few fees, and so we have the document copy fee. And so this is the citywide copy fee that's under the terms of the Public Records Act, and as we mentioned earlier, uh, decided to go with the first ten pages, no charge to, you know, because the vast majority of people are really just looking for a couple of pages, and it's not worth dealing with quarters and dimes and nickels. And so, but if you have a larger uh request, that is the, the twenty-five cents a page. With the electronic document, if you want something on a disc or a DVD, so this is not somebody, you know, emailing some uh file to somebody, this is if you want it on a physical device, like a disk or a thumb drive, it would be five dollars per device, however many files that ends up being. Uh, for document certification, if you want to certify that a, a copy is a true um copy of a city document, there's a process the city clerk has to go through to to verify that, and so that's why we're recommending that change in the fee there. Um, the notary public, and this is if you're providing notary public services to the public, not part of regular city operations, there's a state fee of fifteen dollars, so just updating that. Uh, transcription services is not a thing anymore, so we're saying this fee should be removed. Legal ad noticing, we're creating a new fee for this, and so this mostly involves development. If I remember correctly, and so this would basically be passing through the newspaper cost, it, it was represented there for the different size or different amounts of, of notices. Uh, document report compilation, if, you know, under the Public Records Act, you can't charge for reproduction of a document that exists, but if someone asks for something that doesn't exist and you have to create something, um, then it would be an actual cost and with a deposit upfront. And for the citi- civil litigation attorney service, for city attorney, basically allowing to charge the market rates for attorney services um when it's um able to do so. And then we have the last little bit of affordable housing at the end here, the affordable housing lien processing, updated that fee to recover the cost of processing, both for that and for the, the recent base. And that, my friends, is two hundred and forty-five services. And it's, we got it in before five o'clock.
There any other comments um or questions this time?
Thank you, Mary, sorry about that.
Okay.
I don't see any other hands raised, um, we uh discussed the comments and the individuals who had signed up as attendees uh for the most part have hung around and asked questions. I have no one else here, it looks like.
Okay. Well, if, if that's all the questions, um, I first want to thank everybody for um attending, and thank you, Eric, for that um presentation, it, it gave a lot of clarity to, to everyone. Um, I do want to do a quick little wrap-up of um items that we kind of covered. On the policy, uh, the one suggestion that I heard from Councilmember Waterfield was that you would, you would like to see uh the, the policy have some um correlation on the low, medium, and high with examples of what would go in to those um in terms of the category, so the community development, the public safety, which ones kind of, where would they typically fall? Um, again, that's going to be, a, a policy is, tends to be a guideline, so it may not always fall in there, but maybe that, the, in, in most cases. Um, so we'll, we'll look at that and see if there's some other ways we can incorporate that. Um, and then on fees, um, the, there's a lot of, a lot of different comments, but the biggest ones being on um community development and that um possibly some of the fees that are, are large increases, that maybe the goal should be having a hundred percent cost recovery as a goal, but that maybe spread those out over a few years in order to get it up to that cost, that hundred percent cost, so that's a possibility there. Um, downtown fees, it sounded like they, we still might want to continue that being a um uh subsidy, so to encourage the downtown. And the, there's a question on how the appeals should be subsidized, uh, because we don't want to discourage um appeals if we need to, if, or those that maybe are going to be affected by it, but yet at the same time, uh, we don't want to make it so easy that everybody does it with, with no, no thought of, of whether it needs to be done. So, some things to think about, I just wanted to recap that. And then last, um, we will be having a second workshop, it will be March eleventh, and it's uh from seven to nine PM, and um it will be again on, on Zoom, so um that is all we have, is there anything else to go? Um, Mr. Stillwell, that you might want to, that you want to say, or anyone else for that matter?
No, I mean, I think this was good information, uh, thank you, Eric, for working through each of those, I think it's important because, I mean, even though we have a lot of fees, they're all a little bit different, they're all a little bit focused on a different balance between public benefit and the user benefit, so I, I'm glad, uh, thank you for running through that, and thank you, Council, for sticking through it and, and asking the questions as we're going along, and uh, we appreciate the feedback, we just want to get it right and get a policy that reflects what our priorities are, and and uh this was helpful today to be able to do that.
And, and Jason, Councilmembers, um, first, I'd like to thank our interpreters, uh, they were um working in the background uh from um language, oh, I had it here, um interpret, language partners, and uh they did a great job, I um, this is a first for us, so um I'd like to have any feedback from staff or the public um on our next workshop, if there are things that we could do during the process, not just with the interpretation, but um, the meeting flow as a whole, we would appreciate your feedback at the city clerk's office. That's it for us.
Okay, I guess I should say thank you also, um, please, I thank you for the interpreters, that, that was very, very helpful. And thank you, Mr. Ty and Mr. Johnson, I think this is really an interesting exercise, um I think we had more energy at the beginning than we did at the end, but I think it was an interesting exercise just to see for us what the exact costs are and things, because a lot of times we don't think, like I, when you said the cost for HR on, on, on a certain job, and I, I think that's really important. But I want to remind everyone, we started this before COVID nineteen, and now we're in the middle of COVID nineteen, and it's like, everything has been peeled back, and, and so we're seeing what's really, really out there and the impacts that COVID nineteen has, we know that people are out of work, people aren't able to pay water bills, they're not able to pay rent. And um, this, I, I guess this is a real clear picture of really what's going on out there and the impact that we have on the decisions we make. And I appreciate that um Rex and Parks Leisure was not, was not touched, because that's, that's really important, I can, I think I could speak for all five of us there. That's really important to us, we have a very young community, and they enjoy our twenty-eight, twenty-nine parks and all the recreation that we provide. But um, I think it was Mr. Ty that said the cost is the cost. And so we are able to see who's benefiting from some of these costs. And now what are we going to do? So I, I'm looking forward to our next uh study session, but I wanted to thank everyone for hanging in there today, this was great. So this concludes our workshop, and the next one, March eleventh at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Mayer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson, Eric, and Chu, Mary, my, Jason.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Thanks, Rhonda. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.